Okay, if I could get everybody's attention, please. We're going to call meeting number forty-eight to order. This is December twenty-first, two thousand fifteen, at five-thirty P.M. in the Thomas J. Smith Council Chambers. Would you all please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Anderson?
Here.
Davidson?
Here.
Fleming?
Here.
McCambell?
Here.
Scott?
Here.
Okay, before we get the meeting started tonight, we did have a situation that I'm going to ask Chief Beard to come and to make an announcement to you all.
Yeah, thanks. We'd just like everybody to know this afternoon that, to our knowledge, three councilmen received a threat of the city council building being blown up or exploded. There's a couple different sentences. The emails just weren't forwarded or cut and pasted. They said, "This varied a little bit, but appeared to have come from the same server." We've notified the FBI Cyber Crimes Division. Those emails have already been sent to that division. And as a matter of fact, they already got back ahold of me, asking me some more specific questions. So, we're looking in to try to figure out where those threats come from. We've taken the threat seriously. That's why tonight, I'm sure when you came in, you saw the extra police presence in the building. We've gone through the complete building, from the basement to upstairs, every file cabinet, every trash can, every conceivable place that we think an explosive device could be hidden. So far, we haven't seen anything out of place, but we have officers on every floor. So, again, even for those of you out there listening, if you come to the meeting, you'll be escorted up here to the meeting. It'll be a little bit different than it's been in the past. So, I mean, that's where we're at right now. We'll continue to look into it.
Thank you. I just want to, again, if there is anybody that feels uncomfortable, that I wanted to make sure that everybody knew about the threat that was made, and you're more than welcome to see your way out at this time. And we're going to try to move through the meeting. And actually, toward the, when we get to the end of the meeting, we're going to cut the public comments so that everybody can get home and we can have time to kind of get things figured out, so.
The only thing I'll add very quickly is it wasn't specific to this meeting. It was just talked about a city council building, but there wasn't date, time, or agenda items specific.
Thank you, Chief. Okay. Tonight, first off, on the agenda, we have a tenure award for thirty-five years of service. And I'll tell you what, thirty-five years is a long time. This certificate of recognition, and grateful recognition of thirty-five years of dedicated service to the city of Burlington, as of December thirty-first, two thousand and fifteen, we hereby present Cheryl Reine with this certificate of recognition. Jim Furno, City Manager. Yay. Thirty-five years, bless Cheryl Reine. Can I get somebody? I've got to have somebody get a picture with her.
You can come down.
Shorten that as it is, you know?
Thank you.
Thanks, Rhonda.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Would you please have a few words?
Well, I don't have too many words, but I'd like to thank you all for this honor. The years have gone by very quickly, but I've enjoyed them, and I plan to enjoy a few more.
Yay.
Thanks.
Good.
Thanks.
I'll tell you what, when you have a good employee, we sure hope you do give us a few more. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next, we have Mayor's Awards tonight, and I'm excited to be reading these. This first one goes to somebody who is special and dear to my heart, and she's just a remarkable person. And I know when I read off the name, those that know her will know exactly why she's receiving this tonight. Be it known, on behalf of the city of Burlington, Iowa, I would like to thank you for being a model Burlingtonian. Your commitment to the South Hill neighborhood and your desire to bring people of all colors, creeds, and social status together is to be admired and has helped make Burlington a great place to live, work, and play. On December twenty-first, two thousand and fifteen, this Mayor's Award is presented to Dana Atkins. Would you please come forward? Yay. Dana, would you please have a few words?
Now, you should not ask me to talk. I am very honored to get this award. It has been a pleasure to serve on the South Hill Association. There's some great things that are going on in Burlington, as you guys know, you're a big part of most of that. I am very excited, as well as good things that are going on in South Hill. It gives me pleasure to see, not only talk about what's going on, but to actually put it into action and watch it come to pass. So, that's very exciting. It's been fun to be a part of that. Thank you very much for this honor.
Thank you. My other Mayor's Award recipient has not made it tonight, so I would like to thank Allyn Holton Dean for all of her service for the city of Burlington, and I will make sure that she receives her award. Which brings me to my surprise recipient tonight. Tonight is bittersweet for me because it is the last council meeting that I will have with somebody that I consider not just a coworker, but a dear friend. We, when I got on the council, I started the council at the same time. We were elected together. We started, and we came in, and it was quite the experience when we found out the shape of the city's finances and those sort of things. But it was all about perseverance and working together. And I'll tell you, she has just been a tremendous asset, somebody that I can lean on. And I let her know in advance. I said, "Just because you're leaving the council," I said, "you know I've got your phone number. I will hunt you down." And, but I want to, first off, present her with a Mayor's Award tonight, just because I think she is not only deserving, but just a special, special human being. Be it known, on behalf of the city of Burlington, Iowa, I would like to thank you for being a model Burlingtonian and the velvet glove. Your expertise, your willingness to serve in difficult situations, and your love for this city over the past four years has helped make Burlington a great place to live, work, play, and develop. Thank you for being my velvet glove. On December twenty-first, two thousand and fifteen, this Mayor's Award is presented to Becky Anderson. Give you that. And, hot Rob, get a... Awesome. And I'm going to ask you to have a few words, and you can just do it right from where you're at, if you'd like.
Well, I guess I want to have a few words at the end here, probably more than now, because I don't want to get emotional. So, I think I'm going to hold my words till at the end of the meeting.
Okay. While you're holding your words, I would like to give you that. That is from me. And also, I would like to present you with these. Would you please stand up?
Oh, which one is mine in here? You like OJ, they won't fit. Oh, thank you. That means a lot. I'll always keep these. I think of my time here on the council.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Which brings us to our recognition of Councilmember Anderson. And... The city of Burlington, in grateful recognition of Becky Anderson. Thank you for your outstanding and faithful service as a city council member for the city of Burlington, Iowa, January two thousand and twelve to January two thousand and sixteen, presented by Burlington City Council. And this is her plaque. And I am going to let you save your words, but can I get somebody to get a picture? Rhonda, can I? I'm sorry, I want to make sure. Can I get a picture of her with her plaque as well, please?
But I can't talk till the end because I'm too afraid I won't be able to get through the meeting, so. All right, thank you. Thank you so much. And I am, yeah, saving my words till the end.
Okay.
And I have plenty of thank yous.
All right. Next on the agenda tonight is the consent agenda. All matters listed under Item One, Consider Agenda, having been discussed or considered to be routine by the city council, will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If a discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Is there anybody that would like to have any of the items from the consent agenda removed?
Were you going to read any of these, or just?
I'd like to have Resolution Number One removed, please, for discussion.
Hey, Ben?
Yeah, I was so... Boy, I'm ready to leave now that I get Becky's stuff. It's a wrap. We're out of here. Okay, on the consent agenda, let me read through those. I apologize. As the usual finances miscellaneous, minutes of previous meetings, payroll and city claims, reports and bonds. We have seven resolutions. The first is a resolution approving final acceptance, final payment, and release of retention monies for the CDBG facade project. The second is a resolution approving nuisance abatements for various properties. The third is a resolution approving maintenance and operation of public infrastructure in the Lavender Lane subdivision. The fourth is a resolution authorizing the filing of an application with the state of Iowa and Southeast Iowa planning, or regional planning, for STP funds for improvements along Washington Street from existing concrete pavement just east of Central Avenue, overpass to the Front Street on behalf of the city of Burlington, Iowa. The fifth is a resolution authorizing the filing of an application with the state of Iowa and Southeast Iowa regional planning for STP funds for the replacement of a light-duty bus. The sixth is a resolution amending fees and charge schedule at Flint Hills Municipal Golf Course. And the seventh is a resolution authorizing the signing of jurisdictional agreement document by Iowa Byways signage installation and maintenance. Now, that makes it a lot easier for you guys to know if you want to have something to remove, now doesn't it? Is there anybody from the audience that would like to remove any of these items from the consent agenda? I see none. Council?
Number one, Mayor.
Number one. Okay. Can I get a motion, please?
Got a motion to approve all listed under Item One, Consent Agenda as amended.
Second?
Anderson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Okay. First on the agenda, or next on the agenda, we have the consideration of plans and specifications for the two thousand and sixteen Depot Great Room renovation project.
Mayor and City Council, there is a variety of things that are in your council package. I'm going to try to, I think last time, Tim, you in particular kind of wanted a little bit more shortened-down visual display, so I'm going to try to do that through this presentation. So, here's a schedule of where we're at with this project. Again, we, most recently, we started at the work schedule, the work session where we talked about it. And, long story short, we're at the red, where here we are at the point of conducting the public hearing and approving the plans and specs. The plans and specs will be sent out unless there's any changes or anything we've got to make tomorrow. We have a pre-bid on January sixth. The bid opening is the fifteenth. It is scheduled to be back for you for approval on the eighteenth. And according to the grant, we need to have this contractor underway by the eleventh of February. Any questions with that? Here's, as we've gone through this, there's some information, I think, that Jim gave you. Essentially, when we submitted this project, that top number was six hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. As we've gone through it, and it's now called base bid and soft cost, we're at seven hundred and thirty, what we're calling the base bid, seven hundred and thirty thousand and sixty-two, six hundred and twenty-two dollars. Of course, the grant was for twenty percent of the six hundred, or eighty percent of the six hundred thousand, or four hundred and eighty. So, total funds based on the, now, this is the estimate by the architect, is a little over almost two hundred and fifty-one thousand. Of course, we have the hundred and twenty from the city contribution. We have the almost ten thousand from the Heritage Trust. We do have a potential energy rebate that's been worked on as part of this of twelve thousand. And I don't know, as of writing of this, there was a little over seventy thousand that had been kind of raised by Friends of Depot. So, to fund this, as we sit here today, based on what we know, we had almost thirty-eight thousand five hundred yet in funds, based on the engineers for the architect's estimate. As part of this whole package, there are some alternates. I'm going to explain this a little bit later. With these alternates, I won't get into them now. That seven hundred and thirty goes to a little over eight hundred and twenty-eight thousand. Again, all the other numbers are the same here that we went through. All these numbers are the same. The difference is now, instead of coming up, I think with, that was thirty-eight, we're now at a hundred and thirty-six thousand. And I will try to explain that a little bit more graphically, what these alternates and everything are through this presentation. Essentially, here are the alternates. Alternate one is completing the sprinkler system. Basically, and I'll illustrate that again, we're going to have some kind of a skeletal sprinkler system in, but it's not going to be hooked up and ready to go. Basically, the sprinkler system's going to be in the overhead space, the way we've got the current project designed, so that should we be able to make this more of a multipurpose facility, all's we've got to do is add the rest of the sprinkler system. There's some cleaning of the great room upgrades of travertine and that. That's almost fourteen and a half. There's pictures of this, as we illustrate this, as we go on, but this is the summary. Eighteen thousand for some of the finishes, an additional rooftop unit, thirty-two thousand, and some exterior painting, ten thousand. So, one of the important parts is alternates one, four, and five could easily be added after the project is underway. Excuse me. The other two and three would be much easier to incorporate in the project as we go along if funding's available. So, here's some aspects of the project. This is in the area that you'll, where the furnace is, where they have the current museum. Of course, we have the furnace in there. That needs to be relocated, and we need to take out this and put the window back the way that it was. This is all part of the, both of these items, excuse me, are part of the base bid. Here's another aspect in the... Now, this is in the area where it was the bus terminal here. Resetting the stone is part of the base bid. At one point in time, as part of the drainage system, this travertine and everything was taken off so we could put the downspout drains in. So, we've got a finish. This is part of the base bid, putting this travertine back and finishing this part of the window. Again, part of the base bid is repairing the stone where the, where there's ductwork that's damaged. Now, so, several aspects. This is, the base bid was involved just cleaning the floors and the walls. As we got into this a little further, as Klinger and him got into this, we realized that there's more that really needed to be done to do this job right, and this is part of the alternates. This is, it's a little tough to see here, but you could, there's actually three components. They actually took this tile, and they cleaned it, and they rewaxed it. No, you can't tell it. This is the way the floor is as we are. They rewaxed it, and it still kind of comes up with a gray finish. This one, they kind of cleaned and rejuvenated, and it's better, but it's rougher. And the idea would be to clean, polish it, and then rejuvenate it, and you really get that nice black travertine look to it. Another component of this is, each of these actually has a stainless steel outliner there, and when you do all this, you can get that so it comes back the way that it was. So, again, this is all part of the alternate, these three levels of restoring the floor, and also cleaning the walls. You can kind of tell the difference. This picture, you can tell the difference. This wall's just been cleaned. This is the way they look now. The walls and the whole thing, you realize people were smoking, and the whole thing really needs to be cleaned, and we really feel it, and it's part of an alternate, really needs to be done to do the building right. But, so it's done professionally. Here's another, excuse me, aspect of the project. The base bid for this area is to just, this is actually in the old bus. You don't see this from where you are now, about where they sold the bus tickets. It's just to paint the ceiling as is, the base bid. But the alternate is to finish, you know, this area with a sheet rock and plaster veneer so it looks more like it did. Part of that plaster veneer is going to be, you can see the electrical wiring in here. I believe in the old days, that was all covered with a plaster veneer. If you'd see the pictures of the old, there was just cylindrical lights that were hanging down, and all that was covered up. Here's an aspect. Actually, the women's room, or the powder room, as it's called, that's just basically a concrete floor. That is not included in the base bid, but it is part of the alternate. Part of the base bid does involve removing the, taking the radiators and removing them. The alternate is involved with powder coating and reinstalling them. One of the issues we have here, we really think, as we've gone through this, this is going to be kind of attractive nuisance with this step here and people getting up, possibly falling into the window. It'd be better to put the radiators back the way they are. They won't be hooked up, but they will be a visual and black. So, that's, again, part of the alternates. Another aspect of the alternates is when they clean all the walls and everything, you can kind of tell there's a gold painting in each of these. And so, the ideal thing, this is going to run and not look so well when they go through the cleaning process. Again, it's part of the alternate. That really should be, the letter should be redone after the walls are cleaned. Now, another alternates out there, I think you can see it, but there's just various areas where the painting's been kind of hodgepodge. I'm not sure why somebody started painting here, and that's all they painted. And you can kind of tell up here by the top where somebody painted up to about this level. That, again, is an alternate that isn't in there. It's like alternate five. And hopefully, I can do that with this. As part of the base bid, there's two components that have added a lot of the cost. One of the things is, if we want to, this is, I'll say this, the skeletal, I call it sprinkler system, it's estimated at twenty-one thousand five hundred dollars. That is planned. We are putting in a drop ceiling in the room. It's twenty-two feet tall, and it'll be about a sixteen, eighteen-inch drop ceiling. The current plan is to put a skeletal sprinkler system in up here. It will not be, the heads and everything won't be picked, put together, but it seems to make a lot of sense if we can, if the money's available to put that in now, then try to put it in, tear the lowered ceiling down and put all this up. That twenty-one five, done as part of the construction, I'm guessing more than likely to be like thirty thousand done later. So, that is part of the base bid at this point in time. Another aspect of this is, and again, this is not needed as a transportation center the way the project was put together, and that's where the funding came. Another component is to add some additional ductwork. If we're starting to get a lot of people in there, we need additional heat, cooling essentially, to cool the building if we're going to get like a hundred people in there. So, we are, as part of the base bid, we are looking to put this additional ductwork in, and that estimate is about eight thousand dollars. Those two components are part of the base bid. So, any kind of questions with that? I mean, if I had to choose one of these two, I would take the ductwork out if we need to. But as we've got, as I met with Klinger, and we went through the process, we think it makes sense to at least start putting this stuff in there, because that's, I mean, if you're doing this with your owner, you had the money, I think that's the way that you would go about it. Now, these, again, are part of aspects of the base bid. When it comes to the alternate, alternate two adds controls and a new water line. That's estimated at about twenty-two thousand dollars. This is needed if you want to have it more of a multipurpose, and you want more than a waiting room for the great room, or if we, the restaurant is added on to it. This is needed. Now, this, in my opinion, could be a component that could be, if the restaurant's going to come in, maybe they could cost share or pick up the majority of these costs. The other part of this is, alternate four, it adds the RT unit on to the rooftop. Again, the base bid was going to have all this in place, and basically, all's you'd have to do is, the pipe work and everything would be through the ceiling. You would have less disruption to the new roof that's going to be placed on. I mean, we think it's ideal to do it if the money and everything is there. Maybe a little bit of a stopping point. Is that, any questions on any of this? This is kind of a key component as we go through the way this is put together. All right, I'll move on. This is the last slide I had to share with you, but this is kind of where I've seen this project go. In two thousand and fourteen, we received a similar grant so we could update and make the bathrooms handicap accessible. Several people, I remember in particular Zach James saying, "Why didn't you go for the big enchilada and do the whole thing?" So, that kind of made me start thinking, "Let's try to put this whole thing together, which we did in this last year's submittal." And we put it in, and basically, the grant was limited at the time to six hundred thousand dollars because the city only had a hundred and twenty, or it's twenty percent, to contribute toward it. And this is where we are today. We're right here. We're having the project ready to bid. Of course, as we sit here and discuss it, and you've seen some of the numbers, Jim's added an additional comment in the packet. We do have concerns with the total financing. If everything came in the way that it's currently bid, where the base bid, we're thirty-eight thousand dollars short. Now, we don't know where that's going to be. And again, another component of this, as I stressed earlier, the grant needs to be, we need to have somebody, theoretically, the way the grant, we might be able to request an extension, but we need to have somebody under contract essentially six months after it was issued, or February eleventh. As I've stated earlier, the project as the base bid is only going to have it available as a transportation waiting area. More funding is needed to make it more of a multi-use facility. I know that is the desire of Friends of Depot, to be able to do this. And I think everybody in the community would love to be able to see us do more than just have passenger transportation, maybe do, have events and do other things. It has that potential, but right now, the funding, the way everything's put together, is not there. I think another good thing that's happened, there has been some interest in someone putting in a restaurant in as this is engulfed and developed. And hopefully, that final build-in, they come, if we can get all this going, hopefully, someone will show some interest in the rest of the second, the first floor and the second floor. So, again, what you're asked to do is approve the plans and specs. And Jim, I know you added comments. I don't know if you want to add anything. I know we've got, I don't know if there's been a change. I haven't talked with Jason Strandberg. He's here, the chief of the fundraiser. I know Friends of Depot are here. Others, I'm sure, as you hold your public hearing, et cetera, may have comment. But hopefully, this kind of summarizes where we're at today in a pseudo nutshell.
Can I clarify? We go out to bid for every, the whole package, and then we can pick and choose what we want to award. Is that what you're suggesting we do?
Well, I'm, we've had multiple discussions on how this is going to work. I'm hoping of the expectation that the base bid can be something that we can afford. Now, again, that estimate is a little higher than that now. There is like seventy-five thousand dollars of contingencies. That's where that soft cost comes in. But the concern comes in when you're renovating an old building. You don't want to take all your contingencies in the upfront bid, because I've never been involved in a project, whether it's home or anything else, that something else in an older building's going to cost you some money, and there won't be a change order. And again, I'm sorry, but this is just an estimate. I mean, I feel good, and Cindy from Klinger is here. I know that they've gotten a lot of good comments from all the, a lot of the local people that will be part of the bidding process, so.
I guess my point is, I don't...
I guess my point is, I don't want us approving something tonight that's going to cost more than the money we have available.
I guess that, out of this project, uh, if you bid the the package as it's set up, uh, you have your base bid plus your alternates, uh, you get back your, whoever bids on this project, and you find that all of your base bids are at or above the funds that you have available to do something. If they're, if they're above what you have the funds available to do things, uh, what you can, would have the option to do is to look at who your lowest responsible bidder is off of that base bid, and then look at, as you go to work with a contract with them, look at what items uh, you decide to, are the least high on your priority list that you can cut to make that package work.
That answers my question.
But you got to find out what your bids come in at, and and before you really getting into the details on that, um, of the different scenarios that could be there, you wait until you get the bids back. But we do have the ability, if if the bids are too high, to 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 have an avenue to figure out how to cut things out.
So there's nothing very binding here, then, really, is there?
No, but I guess one of the things, you know, the the details of what's the the most, the highest level import of importance, I'm going to view it differently than someone else is. And in fact, uh, just speaking with the folks from Klinger, I know that there's a difference of opinion about which items to cut first. And we'd have to have some discussion. And really, I think we need to see where the bids come in before you really know how to prioritize those, because it really kind of depends on what the the actual costs are. Um, but again, when you looked at what my memo was in there, mine was the spring, I mean, the sprinkler system. It wasn't one of the priority items that we had in there, but it may be that you're ten thousand short, and is what Steve's saying. Um, you can take the duct work out, and that's the item that gets you to within what you're trying to be at. I mean, I I do kind of see the validity in just bidding it as is, and see where, see where you come up to, but recognize that we can't award an ultimately a contract beyond what we have the funds to 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 pay for.
And that would be the vote, then, when you, when the bid is awarded.
Yes.
Not this one.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Uh, is there anybody from the audience that has any uh, concerns
Ron Gillette, eight twelve Dunham, Burlington. Yeah, um, I I understand, and I appreciate the numbers that are there. And I'm very, very pleased to hear the details for the first time in regards to everything concerned. Good for you. But there's a couple of things that popped up in my mind. I was waiting to hear from him, or from you people, that I didn't hear. In the day, back when trains happened to be a very, very functional part of this community in regards to shipping of agricultural products.
Sir, excuse me. Yeah, I'm just, yeah, can you?
Livestock, uh, people needing long-distance traveling, it made it a lot easier for them for not wagon trains and horses. We moved on down the road, and the uh, the access to automobiles and other forms of transportation. Then we moved into the entire trucking industry with semis. Well, all of that was being taken away from anything to do with the train. Well, now we're down to strictly an Amtrak train, that to best my knowledge. The only other train is bringing coal from outside the west of Iowa, taking it through the center of Iowa, through the center of Burlington, over to the east side to Illinois. Now, the jobs concerning that were over out to the west and out to the east. That train system for that coal wasn't involved, Burlington at all. Now, I went down when I first read about this issue, about this, the train depot restoration. I went down to the depot, and I talked to a couple of people down there about the amount of people flow concerning. Well, neither one of them really had an answer. I got a train schedule. And I sat back, I drove over to the depot, and I watched the incoming trains, I watched the outgoing trains, and just uh, um, the morning and afternoon. I didn't go any longer than that. All I saw the activity was that somewhere in the ballpark of roughly twenty, twenty-four people getting on the train, or twenty, twenty-four people getting off the train. Now, to spend that kind of money, concerning the money coming out of the pockets of the rest of us, that falls right into the parameter exactly, uh, regards to the police station. The Hawkeye had in the newspaper today, and why am I not finding it? The Hawkeye had in the newspaper today about the vote concerning the police station down at the USB bank. And the one number, the one word they used that really stunned me was overwhelming. The total vote was a hundred and ten people out of the entire population of this city, and that was an overwhelming vote. That's what the paper said. That that's all I had.
I gotta, I gotta have you stick with the depot.
Maybe they were wrong. The Hawkeye's done this before. They didn't get it right. So that's all I'm saying. The paper said seventy-seven favor, thirty-three voting.
Percent.
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 See, they didn't say that. Thank you very much. They did not say percent. All they said was seventy-seven, thirty-three. Okay, all right. But the other side of the coin is, when it came to the police station, that to me, in this entire city, is the number one priority. It is concerning the safety, the welfare, the health of the people in this community. That deserves a first consideration. Everything after that takes secondary, tertiary, and all the way down the line. I don't think you would argue with that. But now, this issue concerning the depot, I don't see anywhere near the, I'm an industrial manufacturing engineer. I've been so for forty-five years. My job was strictly reducing the cost of product flow, work-related injuries, scrap and rework, to help benefit the company. Well, to me, just try to be real simple about it. When it comes to the city council, and when it comes to this kind of money that you're spending, for me, the very serious interest should be, what kind of people flow offering advantages to the community, not just downtown, but to the entire community? What does this train depot restitution, rehabilitation, what does that offer to the entire population? Well, get into their automobiles, and they'll drive to the airport if they're going to fly to California, or take their automobiles and drive up to Minnesota on a vacation time. They don't take the train anymore. So, to me, this is not the way the city should function. Okay, that's it.
Thank you, sir.
I have a feeling maybe Don or somebody has a little bit of comment to that, but I, I just want to add that this was a multi-transportational type project. And while he's right, there are, you know, in overall numbers, there are a limited number of Amtrak, but uh, not, we have like two-hundred-and-twenty-thousand rides each year that are performed, that we get credit for on our bus transportation service. And that doesn't mean we have two-hundred-and-twenty-thousand people riding, but on an annual basis, this this is more than just for the Amtrak passengers. It's really more for all of our, because it is our transfer station for the bus system. So I just think we need to keep that in mind as well. It's not just for Amtrak. And and really, the bus passengers are a much more local group of people that are going to benefit from it. Amtrak was just a little bit of a side benefit that kind of helped us, I think, in the eyes of being more of a multi. When the DOT is awarding a grant like this of of four-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars to try to help persuade and get us a little bit more favoritism receiving this grant. So, I mean, I I I personally think it would be a shame. I've only been here a short time, and I know Don and others probably have things to add. And I know that I've been with Zach James, and people have had a lot of things that they've talked about, trying to do something with this historic building. And this does seem to be a very viable, if we can make it financed, to finally get something and make this a more viable historic building in Burlington. And again, something I think, as we build it, more things will come. And hopefully, it'd be nice to see the whole thing renovated someday. But I'll pass on. But I mostly wanted to add.
Thanks for the clarification on that.
It is a bus facility as well, transportation.
And that stays busy all the time. Uh, did, okay.
Jason Strandberg, twenty-six forty-eight, Sibley. Uh, quickly, I like that math. If there's twenty people getting on and off in a day, that's fourteen thousand a year. It's pretty good. Um, Steve wanted an update on the numbers. From the Friends standpoint, we still have about seventy-two thousand in pledge funds committed. Um, you saw on the slide, there's about forty thousand, and we're still trying to track down. And we're always in a, in a fundraising mode. I think the Friends have been for years. I think it would be great for our efforts as well, to see the commitment from the city, because a lot of people have heard the song in this before. And to see something finally happening with the building, and just continue to, to help our efforts, which long helps yours. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. We're good there?
I'm uh, I'm really excited to see things happening at the depot. Um, improvements, I've been setting up here since, off and on since nineteen ninety-eight, and it's always been a priority for the council, but has never made it uh, very far up the list. And I'm glad that we're, that that something's happening. I just wish we had a little more clarity on uh, on where the funding is going to come from. I would really like to see the, the revised with the alternates happen. Um, I just, I I I, I want to see where we're going to, where those funds are going to come from before we can do that. So, uh, let's, I I'm going to vote in favor of this, and and hope that the bid bids come in favorable. And but, uh, when it comes down to it, in uh, next, next year, when we, when we vote on the uh, on the bids, we can only accept what we've got money for. So, um, if it's not there, we've got to know, we've got, we've got to know that up front.
And I would totally agree with that. I'm not opposed to this working, and it seems like if we're going to do something, it doesn't pay to do it halfway. If you're going to do it, you might as well get it done, um, which is another topic of discussion. But um, if we're going to do it, then that'd be great. But I'm not, not going to vote to spend any more city money to get it done.
Any other comments, counsel?
No.
I just want to throw in there that I am uh, very, very, very proud of the Friends of the Depot, and uh, I I thank you guys are awesome. And uh, again, I just, I just want to honor you for the hard work, raising the money that you have. And uh, I hope that uh, I hope that we can make this happen. It's been a long time coming, so.
And I guess I do have one little comment, because uh, it's true, the passengers that are there, and and the bus people, but there there is another group of people that go there. And those are people who are interested in a historic building like that. And there are people that come to this city looking at our historic architecture, and that building is very prominent in that way. And so, there might be people getting off the train, there might be people, but then there's other peoples, people that are visitors to our community that would probably visit down there too. So I just wanted to add that to the number of people that would be down there.
Your honor, I move to close the public hearing.
Anderson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambe?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Your honor, I move to approve the plans and specifications for the twenty-sixteen depot great room renovation project.
Anderson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambe?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Uh, this is time for a hearing for consideration of an ordinance vacating and selling a portion of alley right-of-way located south of the properties at six-twenty-three and six-twenty-seven Acres Street, Burlington, Iowa. Publication has been made. And I do want to uh, uh, let everybody know that we did receive, all the council members did receive the letter, uh, along with the signature, and along with the signatures, and uh, um, we will uh, we will be taking all of that into consideration. So, uh, anyways, uh...
So, is he open a public hearing on this?
Yes.
Um, this is one that I don't have a tremendous amount of information on. Uh, this is, was uh, planning and zoning that has run this ordinance and this process. So, I kind of will, I guess, go through the details of the ordinance. Uh, had a, we had a staffing issue that came up this afternoon that kind of uh, was unforeseen, and I get to run with this now. So, um, in regards to the alley, if you look on the overhead, um, for the, where this is, this is an area that has, that's north of Harrison, south of South Street, west of South Main Street. Is that correct? Um, sort of have for directions on the bottom. But it is off of acres there, the six-hundred block. Um, has to do with the alley on the south side of the the lot, six-twenty-three and six-twenty-seven Acres Street. Um, had a request for that portion of the alley to be vacated that's hashed, um, the end of that alley. Uh, as you see, the, to the west of that, uh, we, there is an alley area that is being currently used by other property owners. This portion of the alley is uh, there and reserved, but it is currently not used. Um, the request that, or the process that this would go through, if you were to go through, were the conditions of approval. Uh, the vacated portion of alley right-of-way would be sold to and combined with the adjacent parcels at six-twenty-seven, six-twenty-seven Acres Street, owned by Bradley and Lori Parker, uh, the entire sixteen-foot alley right-of-way adjacent to that property. And then the eastern, east of that one, uh, it would be split, split between properties at six-oh-six Denmark, uh, owned by Neil Johnson, and six-twenty-three Acres, owned by Bradley and Lori Parker, with each receiving eight feet of alley right-of-way adjacent to their properties. The sale price of the vacated alley right-of-way shall be five hundred dollars, with Bradley and Lori Parker paying three hundred fifty dollars, and Neil Johnson paying one hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, part of this process, there would be an easement maintained over over the entire portion of alley right-of-way being vacated for sewer line access and maintenance by the city of Burlington. And the property transfer would be given by quitclaim deed. Uh, as you, at your desk, you did receive, um, today, a, a letter, um, from some adjacent residents about this alley, um, requesting that you not do this. If you want to take the time, you can, I don't know if all of you have had the chance to read through their reasons in regards to concerns over if this portion of alley would be vacated, the, it could potentially lead to increased use of the alley to the west of there, and uh, increase their maintenance costs on that. Um, as you want to take that into consideration as we move through this process, there are three readings again, so you haven't had time to mull those concerns over. Uh, that's signed by several adjacent property owners, so you want, want to make sure that you take it into account, uh, as we move through this process, if you do choose to approve readings. Um, one thing I would point out with the, if you do not vacate this alley, uh, one thing, that alley is available if the residents at six, at the, from those property owners that are adjacent to the portion that we're talking about vacating, they certainly could extend the alley through there and have the right to use it as, as it is currently. This doesn't change their ability to do that.
I would agree with you on the fact that I would like, I'm going to need some time to, to consider all of this. And uh, again, this is just the uh, this is just the first reading. There has to be uh, three readings uh, through the, for the process as well. So, um, is there any, is there anybody from the audience that, uh, yes?
I'm Lori.
I'm happy to come to the. And then just give us your name and your address, please.
Lori Parker, six-twenty-seven Acres.
Go ahead, Lori.
Go ahead.
Um, the alley comes down, and it quits right at the edge of my property. If I can, you want me to point her, and you see where I'm going?
We, we got it.
Okay. Um, there was, I think, an alley there at one time, and it had been abandoned. Um, I've had the property, I actually have both of them. And I have no way to get to six-twenty-seven Off Street parking. Um, my husband's passed away, so I need to get rid of one of the properties. And I don't want a shared driveway. And it's going to be hard to sell a house if, you know, you have to share a driveway. The alley's not going to go through and hook up, you know, and cause through traffic. It's still going to be stopped. And my plan was just to use like the eight foot to get onto my property to have the Off Street parking. There's a pretty big hill out front, so it's not, you know, easy to get. Several steps. Um, I talked years ago about doing it, and then it was, it was too expensive for us to do at that time. Uh, the gentleman on the other side of the alley, he, it it's all woods and it's all ravine. I mean, it's really tough to get down in there. Um, and he just pretty much wanted it just because there are lots of times, we've got a lot of kids and stuff going down through there. And he's concerned someone gets hurt, and that's kind of what it's, what it's all about. I started the process so I could not have to park on the street when I sell it out of the property.
Thank you. Any other comments on the, on the alley? Counsel? Where you guys at on the alley? Counsel, where you guys at on that?
Well, since it takes three readings, I, I think we ought to start the process and then we can always go back on the second or third reading.
And.
I would have to say, this is very progressive thinking on her part. I mean, that's, if you noticed what people are doing now is actually digging out their front yards and, and creating parking and, and exposing their foundations instead of finding a logical way of, of doing this. I think she should be commended for, for this forward thinking. That's, I mean, that's what that right of way is for. It makes sense, people parking on their own property and, and saving, and not using the street as a parking lot. This is what I've been talking about for the last year. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Well, I have one more thing to add, just quickly. My neighbors are great.
Hold on, wait, wait till you get to that.
I mean, the neighbors, they're good neighbors and I, they were out of town and I just came back and got the letter. I didn't know that they were going to be disturbed by this. And it, they're wonderful and it, it's two different family members living next to each other on this alley. And I know they're concerned, you know, people driving through, but it, it's not going to be that, just kind of like a lane off the alley that's there. And they have worked at that end of the alley, but it's still the city's alley. I mean, I know that they, you know, added some rock and done some stuff and, and made it look nice, but I mean, it's, I mean, at this point, it's just me, so.
As a matter of perspective, as a matter of perspective, the houses that have signed on to the letter that you received were 702 Denmark would be this lot. You have 703 Aetna, six, eight, I'm sorry, acres, 633 acres and 629 acres. So, you can get the, the four property owners that have signed onto the letter and, and where their location is in relation to what's being proposed.
I'm, I'm thinking they just don't understand that it's, it's not like going to be open. It's pretty much, I'm just getting a driveway to get in, so.
Thank you.
It makes me think that they just don't understand it too.
I did ignore one part, portion of that ordinance because I'm not used to doing this, but the city planning commission did hold a public hearing on October 20th and voted 5-0 to approve the vaca, vacating of the described alley based on the status of the alley as a dead end, untraveled alley, along with the desire for ownership and maintenance of the alley by the applicant and the required maintenance of a sewer utility easement within the alley.
Okay. Well, let's move forward then. Are you motion?
I have, I move to be closed the hearing on this issue.
Second.
Kathleen.
Anderson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Here I have a motion for preliminary adoption of the first reading of an ordinance vacating and selling a portion of Alley Rightofway located south of the properties at 623 and 627 Acres Street, Burlington, Iowa.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Let's take it as a vote, Kathleen.
Anderson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
No.
Scott?
Aye.
Okay. Next, we have consideration of City of Burlington South Hill, CDBG owner occupied rehabilitation application.
Up, up on the screen is the map for the Burlington South Hill targeted neighborhood, the area that's identified within this. And who do we have here to present?
This person is Dan Eberhart from the Southeast Iowa Regional Planning Commission.
This person?
Yes. Anyway, each year, the state of Iowa receives community development block grant funds in the Department of Housing and Urban Development and it does a wide array of activities within the state. In particular, in the housing portion of it, they set aside about $6 million a year for owner occupied rehabilitation. This is a grant that cities throughout the state will submit to the Iowa Economic Development Authority. The city in the past has been successful in, in different areas of town, most recently kind of what I call the Osborne area. The city just recently completed the rehabilitation of 10 or 11 homes in that area. And back a few years ago, I know that the Saunderson Heights area was also successful in, in attaining that. So, throughout the years, the city has, has applied for these funds and this year, we are looking at the South Hill area as a targeted neighborhood to apply for these funds again. We kind of, I, I was working with the planning department, you know, asking, you know, what would look, what would make a good area to, to apply for this? And when we kind of settled on this area of town, as we drove out through that area, we kind of set these boundaries as, as making that, this kind of was a focal point in this, in this portion of town. I think it does make a rather attractive area to those people who will be reviewing this application mainly because we have some, a school involved, we have a community center through the Maple Hill Center, also kind of a, a nice area that's, that would be attractive to those people that would just be reviewing this application. So, we would be looking at applying for this. The grant application is due January 15th. The city would be applying for roughly $228,000. We would be eyeing about six homes to rehabilitate. That's the maximum amount of homes that they will allow. When I say they, the Iowa Economic Development Authority. So, the people that would qualify, the households with the low to moderate income households, and to kind of give you a rough idea of what that, uh, uh, income range is, that'd be like one person making about thirty, almost $35,000 per year, or a family four making roughly $50,000 per year. So, I, I think we would have quite a few people eligible to apply. The type of activities we'd be doing is generally rehabilitation items on the house, which would be like roof siding, windows, furnaces, insulation, electrical plumbing, things of that nature. Like I said, the grant would be due January 15th and the city, I believe, is putting in around $2,000 per house as a local match. And that's just, as going back in past applications, seems to be about the, the right amount of what the state is looking at for a community to put into a project like this. Now, I know that sounds like quite a bit of money, but when you see this type of investment being made by the state, I, I think, you know, 200, you know, $30,000 being put back into the community by the state, I, I think you'll see a, a lot of supply purchasing taking place here in town. You're putting contractors to work and, and generally, you're, you're helping homeowners out. So, all in all, it's, it's a very good program. I've seen a lot of success with it throughout the years and we're just going to keep our fingers crossed because we know that's a, it's a very competitive program and we'll know something about it around the first part of May if you're successful.
So, Dan, if, if there's, you're looking to six homes, is there a max that each individual homeowner could be eligible for or is it?
Homeowner would be eligible for $24,999. We keep that $1 under $25,000. Otherwise, you spend $25,000 or more using federal dollars, lead paint abatement kicks in on that house and that gets very, very costly. So, that's where we keep that in mind.
There's some additional costs that go in with it?
Yes.
Potentially 4,500?
Yes, we can, we're, yeah, we'll put an additional $4,500 into there that'll be budgeted to help out with lead based paint cost. That would allow us to go above that $24,999.
And then you have some inspections and potential?
Right, technical, technical services, general administrative services.
And where necessary, relocation of the residents?
Yes, especially if that resident has to move out of that home for any period of time, we will budget some dollars out of that to, to move that person out of the home just for their own safety.
Okay. Thank you, Dan.
You bet.
Anyone from the audience?
Yeah, I got something. I gotta get up. I'm getting old. Young. Y'all don't smile too bad. Good day coming too.
Get your name and address, please.
Malsport, 302 South Garfield. And I kind of thought about what I said the last time I mentioned it and it's going to take something like federal grants or state grants, probably take both of them. But we as citizens of Burlington, I think we're, we, we went to voting, we voted for people that we thought would be the best for our community. That's personal concept of, of community mind, that's everybody, regardless of race or what, that's everybody in Burlington. And you're talking about a lot of that team work, working together, pulling together. I seen it in the Hawkeye the other day and it kind of shook me up a little bit. The Hawkeye was talking, talking about, you know, what's going on in our school system with the city. Because like, like city councils and people like that, it's sort of pushed that, gets pushed back on the back burner. And so, my kids all graduated, I guaranteed them, it was when it was all over there, beat the, they both over there, I managed to degree all of them. And so, they do, but I'm broke, so I need to borrow some money from the council. Y'all got the money? This is what I'm talking about. That kind of hurt my, hurt me to hear something like that. Hawkeye put that in there, but we couldn't communicate, that our city council don't communicate with, with the, the board, school board, and they don't. They don't. I couldn't understand it. So, I asked my brother-in-law, he was down in, in Mississippi, they called him down here to, to be, to turn it down here. And he told me that the city council, that the, you know, he, both board anybody, he said it, it's all together. The mayor runs the show. And like, I want that, the mayor runs the show down there. He put you appoint to school board, people like that. And, and working out good, doing, doing, doing fine. But that bothered me is that we can put the money, we can find ways to take that TIF money and the other, other money that's given to us by the state and the federal government, grants and stuff, we can find that and use it for everything we want to use it for. Now, you might not be thinking you don't look like that, but actually you do because people see you, that you're doing what you want to do. It's your thing, do what you want to do. You see what I mean? That's the bad attitude to have because our kids are suffering. And now we're talking about putting this place up there on Maple Hill, salsa school, that housing, housing complex.
This is, this is about the CDBG, this is about the CDBG grant.
I'm, I'm going through you because I want to get, get to something that's very important. And what that very important is, is how can you use that school up there in Maple Hill area more efficiently than, than Ben Lee? And the only way we're going to get this shooting and this cutting, it's coming to Burlington too, so don't get, they got a weird bad boys, they're in the house, but it's coming right on in anyway. And this is something that we need to, we need to, how should we address it? Educate those children and those people out of there. I came here 19, 1972 and I done a research on, on a lady and her kids here in Burlington. Mother didn't finish school, the children didn't finish school. And you see what we got? And they ended up fighting and it's a bad area, I'll admit it's a bad area. But have we applied any principles?
Rev, I, I, this is, I, I think what you want, I think your comments are for, at the end of the meeting. This one, we're still, we're still on the CDBG owner occupied.
Who got this one up on, up on, on Maple Hill?
No, this, no.
We're not talking about that.
This is about the South Hill CDBG rehabilitation application.
I know that, I took, be careful because I do know we brought it and I was on board when it, when it, when it sold.
Yeah, at the end of the, as soon as we get, as soon as we get through.
I'm just trying to tell y'all the attention to the education of our youth and it's important. It's really important.
Oh, I'm not, I'm not taking away from that, I'm saying, but we have to, right now, we're, right now, we're dealing with the CDBG. As soon as we get through with, if you, if you have anything to say about that, then we can talk about that now. Otherwise, we have to wait till after the meeting for.
After the meeting?
Yeah.
Mayor, could you define again, CDBG? What does that mean?
Well, we're on, we're on number three. We're on number three on the considered agenda. If it, if it doesn't apply, if it doesn't apply to number three, which is the consideration of City of Burlington South Hill, CDBG owner occupied rehabilitation application, then, then we'd have to wait till after the meeting for, for open comments.
And that is to give 25, up, almost $25,000 to homeowners in the South Hill area to fix their homes up? That's what we're voting on right now.
You think they have?
Mm-hmm. In the South Hill area.
And this is in the South Hill neighborhood area, but that.
What about, what about, you know, the schools?
But, but that's what we're voting on right now, whether we want to make that eligible for.
Have anybody brought up an idea, please put something up on, up on Maple Hill that can help that, help that community out?
Well, that might be something.
Doing what you want to do here now.
This is the South Hill area, so I mean, this, this is definitely going to help the South Hill area up to where they could, get up to 24, almost $25,000. So, this is, this is definitely going to help the South Hill area.
Okay, that's going to give you, that's going to give you enough money to think about our poor kids and families up there. If you're doing, actually doing something for them on South Hill area.
We are.
Nothing getting done. You can put the tent of apartments up there, that's not going to solve the problem and go, going to walk away. I could go out here in the street and see cars, six to seven cars coming out of Tennessee. It's so bad out on 61, it's just like you're in, you're in New York City, it's some tail beating, everybody tail beating. Now, imagine you accident before it's going to work out. It's, it's something else, it's here. And it ain't going to get no better, it's going to bring all of his little, his little thing with him here and you guys to be ready to deal with it. But you're not reaching out to the community to help.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna have to move on.
Well, I understand why, I mean, you know, I understand why.
Are there any other comments in regards to the, just to the, and I'm not shooting down anybody having any comments, you can comment, but this, we want, we have to stick with the agenda. Right now, we're just strictly dealing with the consideration of, of the rehabilitation.
Ron Gillett, 812 Dunham. I really understand his attempt and I appreciate his attempt. What I'm looking at up here is right smack within 10-minute walk of where I live, where my wife and I live. And I agree 100% that entire area up there either, back up just a minute. Again, in the Hawkeye today, there was an article about the North Hill, not South Hill, about North Hill, something was abandoned, canceled for redevelopment. And the comment that was in the Hawkeye said from this one moment, she said, "It's up to the homeowners to decide." And I agree with that. And I also agree 100% with what you're discussing about that $25,000 to have these people improve their homes. There's half a dozen, I go for walks in the morning, a 45, an hour walk every morning and I don't take the same route. I travel all the way around, 45 minutes around our home. There are three homes, two of them right up central, just south of Angular Street and another one over on Madison Street about, well, it's up just south of South Street, one of, one more. The gentleman, honestly, when it comes to the talking I have heard on the city council in regards to condemned buildings, there are three homes that I know of that should have been torn down 20 years ago. They are that bad, they're horribly, horribly falling apart and they're privatized. And $25,000 is nowhere near going to replace even 10% of the damages to those homes. Then when you travel over, off of Central, over toward the west, yeah, with the west, going over towards Summer Street, there's another two city blocks that the entire city blocks are literally totally in the d- The gentlemen, honestly, when it comes to the talking I have heard on the city council in regards to condemned buildings, there are three homes that I know of that should have been torn down twenty years ago. They are that bad, they're horribly, horribly falling apart, and they're privatized. And twenty-five thousand dollars is nowhere near going to replace even ten percent of the damages to those homes. Then when you travel over off of Central, over toward the west, yeah, the west, going over towards Summer Street, there's another two city blocks, that the entire city blocks are literally totally in the dump, the whole, both streets. Just north, there's pavement and curbs, then for two blocks, there's nothing but gravel. And then the next blocks after that, there's another pavement and curb systems with gutters, but not in that two blocks. And, and, and they look like less than one size bedroom and, or one size room, living room and bedroom, and a very, very small kitchen, and that's it. And the houses are falling apart. Then as up in the area where I said I go for a walk, another very serious consideration is when you get up onto Madison Street, and you're going north up to South, up to South Street. We had a man shoot a man in the stomach right in front of Grand School during the school day with minor children. And then when you get up to Angular Street on, on Central, we had a man shoot another man in the head.
I'm gonna have to have you get back to the.
That's what I'm getting at, that's what I'm getting at. The thing that concerns me about now, we have this criminal activity that's starting to take hold there. We had a man run three houses away from, on Madison Street with a knife, nothing but jockey shorts, screaming he's going to kill somebody. Now, how is the twenty-five thousand dollars going to improve not just that community, but the mentality of people that are doing these things? I mean, what's the, it has to work together.
Are you suggesting we don't apply for the grant? Is that what you're suggesting? You're saying we should not apply for the grant?
No, we should apply for the grant.
Okay, thank you.
There should be just as much emphasis on the people in that community to participate, to cooperate with it.
Thank you.
And I, and I agree with that. But it also includes, the people in the community need to focus more intently, as the article in the paper said. The homeowners need to be making the decision to not only improve their environment, but to improve the neighborhood as a whole.
Thank you, thank you. I would just like to remind everybody again too, all, all we can do is, we, we can't legislate people's attitudes. You know, we, we can't, you, you can't through legislation, you can't make people be good, you know? You can't, we can't stop crime through legislation. All we can do is try to give assistance. And, and if we can assist through some grants to try to help people make their houses nicer, that, that, that really has nothing to do with stopping somebody from, from trying to hurt somebody.
In the day, anytime, any, back to Rockford, Illinois, Sterling, Illinois, and down to Southern Illinois, any day, that there was any participation with the city in cooperation with people improving their neighborhoods and their homes, there had to be just as much cooperation from the people respecting that, to improve their communities on their own as well. That's what I'm trying to get at.
Thank you.
I appreciate what you're doing, but this is only half.
Thank you. Council?
I'm all through with this.
Yep. It's good. Fine with it.
I have a motion to close.
Hang on a second.
Pardon.
Anderson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Okay, I have a.
Mr. Gillett? Please. I, I have to say this, when you guys are in here, please, you have to be respectful and, and treat this, if you were in a courthouse, the, the speaking wouldn't be allowed, and this isn't a courthouse, but please respect the council chambers. And if you have to talk, just step out, just step outside for a minute, please, and then that way we can get through our meeting, so. Okay, uh, where are we at next?
Resolutions. Okay, I have a resolution authorizing application and committing local match to the two thousand sixteen CDBG housing fund program.
Pardon.
Did you want to discuss that first?
Nope. Kathleen, come.
Okay, Anderson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Um, what, what are we authorizing here?
Resolution authorizing application and committing local match to the two thousand sixteen CDBG housing fund.
This is a follow-up of what we just talked about.
Yes.
I just want to make that so people understand it. Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Do you have a resolution authorizing the purchase of property at three hundred Washington Street?
Second.
Great, this is where I want Eric to be able to lead the discussion again. Uh, this was a property that had been provided notice of abandoned unsafe building, um, back in October. During that process, with trying to work with the property owner to get the issues with safety taken care of, the need to get that done, the property owner stated that they would have a willingness to allow this property to, to transfer over to the city for a dollar, allow us to then have control over how the issues associated with it were addressed and taken care of. From a structural perspective, Steve, I don't know if you have some idea of, of what the issues are. I know one of the major concerns that led to its being placarded was the roof itself, getting shingles in the street, and just the condition of from what little perspective we could tell for entries, egress, forms of egress being blocked. Now, I know one of the concerns that's come up from the city has been in regards to, from the council, has been in regards to what happens with this property if we actually act on the offer to purchase it. We do have some fail-safe here from the Downtown Partners, and this is where I think Steve could come forward and kind of talk about where the property sits and what, what the vote was from Downtown Partners in regards to it.
Steve Freebert, Executive Director of Downtown Partners. My Board of Directors did meet last week and voted to authorize purchasing this property for a nominal amount from the city, should, should the city decide to purchase the property or accept the property. And what we worked out with Eric, and I wish Eric was here too, the idea is that we want to see something happen here. I was at the Sheriff's Auction when this building was bought back in about two thousand four for a thousand dollars. It was subsequently purchased again and again. It has languished for a very long time. We want to see something happen there. So what we've kind of worked out with the Development Department is that Downtown Partners would commit to placing twenty-five thousand dollars in escrow towards the structural roof repairs that need be done to make that building at least watertight and from getting any worse. And from my understanding, that's the principal issue with the building is there's a broken roof truss, and apparently, Cindy, I think you were saying that a subsequent owner cut the, the roof joist below the, or the, the joist below the support for that truss, to put in a trash chute essentially. The, the thing has been horribly abused. So we want to see something happen with it. Downtown Partners is committing to doing that, placing that twenty-five thousand dollars towards getting that, those repairs made. In the meantime, certainly if another interested entity, a developer, were to step forward and make the same commitment, we would gladly step aside. But what we worked out with the city is basically putting that twenty-five thousand dollars aside to make sure it isn't somebody else who comes in and offers you a buck for it, and then it just continues to sit there. I, my worry is that if the building doesn't change hands and get into the hands of somebody who's going to do something with it, that the city is going to be faced with a demolition cost, which we know is going to be substantial.
And Steve, DPI did something similar with what we call the bookend buildings too.
Yeah, we purchased in two thousand eleven, I think, five twelve to five twenty-two Jefferson. And the idea again was, these are buildings that we want to see saved, they have languished for a while. So we purchased them, cleaned them up a little bit, identified some funding sources for redevelopment, and they're being redeveloped. And of course, that helps us as taxpayers too, it bolsters the city's tax base.
Well, the board did commit, and, and I get to sit on that board too. So one of the things that did come up, there's, there's some risk that Downtown Partners has taken on, and I, they recognize that. The greater Burlington Chamber, your part, your umbrella organization recognizes that there's some risk that you're taking on if you move forward with this. And they, they're willing to, to do it. They see the, they appear to see the value in this.
We've actually already spoken with a couple developers who are very interested in taking a look at the property. Of course, right now, nobody has access to it, so if the city moves forward with the, the purchase of the property, get lots changed, get access to the developers and take a look at it, we want to get this ball rolling. We don't want to see it wait any longer. As I've said before, I look at this building out my window every day, so I'd love to see something happen there.
What assurance do you have that the twenty-five thousand dollars will fix this problem?
You know, I, I think it's, it's been talking to a couple contractors and a couple engineers along the lines. It's, that's not going to touch restoring the building, cleaning it out, rehabbing the windows. That is strictly making the structural issues right.
And, and it was my belief that that twenty-five thousand wasn't to, really assured to fix it, but to raise the bar for anybody looking at that building, that if anybody else wants that building, they've got to be willing to put up twenty-five thousand.
Downtown Partners has, you still have seventy thousand set aside for?
Something like that, yeah.
For this type of a project? And that combined potentially with, uh, what's the grant that you're looking at?
There's a few different grants that we could access, possibly mid, mid-year, mid-two thousand sixteen. HRDP, Main Street Challenge Grant. Either Downtown Partners could apply, or we could apply on behalf of a developer who would be taking on that project.
So that, you do have.
It's in the contributing building in the Downtown Commercial Historic District, so it's eligible for historic rehab tax credits as well. But yeah, that's exactly what we don't want to see, somebody come in, offer a dollar, and we're right back where we've been for the last fifteen, twenty years.
And did I understand you correct? We buy the building for a dollar, sell it to you for however much, five or a hundred or whatever. And it becomes, so it becomes your, it becomes your building, not our building.
Exactly.
And I think Jim talked about step could take place in January or February.
Yeah, and the timing on this, the offer for us to purchase was by the end of the year. I'm sure that's for tax purposes from the seller. In regards to getting a hearing set, after we get title into our name, then we can start the process, get a public hearing set for a subsequent meeting where we could consider the offer from Downtown Partners and see if there's any other interest from other people who are willing to meet the minimum requirements. The minimum requirement would be that escrow account, so that we know that somebody's willing to at least put the twenty-five grand up towards that.
And then once the roof is fixed, well, or if that money would go back to DPI, I mean, if they prove that they fixed the roof.
Yes.
And that the building is sound. So, and like I think you brought up at the meeting, Jim, the very worst case scenario, I mean, if it had to be tore down, you'd have twenty-five thousand more towards tearing it down.
And right now, in the, the spot that we're in as a community, our building department has gone through the placarding of the facility. Our main recourse is to do the demo ourselves. This is an avenue to try to keep from having to go down that, that route. Now, this, this route does keep us from being able to try to recoup costs from the current building owner on another property potentially. But we'd have to incur the cost of the demo. We're, our, our goal from the building department is to try to see if we can't find a way to get that building saved.
Well, it's good to see DPI back in this, so that's, that's quite encouraging to me, so.
We've had a lot of discussions about it. Certainly, the idea that we could, could get a hold of the building for a small amount of money. We paid, you know, a hundred fifty-five thousand for the bookend buildings, so that was one of the, we couldn't spend it to fix them up. So we're in a better position with this building, I think.
Good deal, good deal.
Thank you, Steve.
All right, any other comments regarding the three hundred Washington Street property?
Ron Gillett, eight twelve Dunham. I am very, very excited to hear Downtown Partners bang right on the table that they're interested. Compared with the activities that did never happen at the manor, and what's never happened at the high school, I was excited about it. But then Mr. Fernal makes a comment in regards to the cost of demolition, is it the cost of the city, number one? In fact, if this Downtown Partners buy the property for what they want to do, is it then we're going to get a reimbursement to the city for the destruction cost? And then number, the other part about it was, under the circumstances, if the owner's going to be selling us the property for a dollar, and then the Downtown Partners are going to come in conjunction with taking the property from the city, then why doesn't, why don't they just go to the owner and just deal with it direct? And if in fact he doesn't go straight to the owner, is that because you, Plaid Plan Planning, giving them tax avoidances for how many, I don't know? It hasn't been in the paper?
I can answer some of these questions.
I don't know, I don't know.
Okay. I think the deed is already signed to, that this would go to the city.
To you.
To the city, yes. And so that's why, it, it has to go that route. And as far as the demolition, the idea of going this route is to not demolish it.
Very good.
And so I think that's two of your questions.
Because he just commented about it being.
Well, because it's been a building that has been abandoned, and so they have to placard it for demolition. And to avoid demolition, the owner is willing to sell it for a dollar.
Oh, all right.
And then we'd pass it on and save the building, so.
Because ever since it first showed up in the newspaper about Washington Street, back at the beginning of the month, I've driven by there a couple of times a week, just trying to figure out why that building was harmful. Compared with other buildings, as I commented earlier, that already seriously need to be taken down right now. I didn't see anything structurally wrong with it. The only thing I did see was, I'm looking through the windows, there was an attempt somehow to strip and clean the inside at one time. It never got finished, that's the only thing I can conjecture. So, okay, it all fits together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are we ready to roll?
Ready to roll.
What were the other concerns with the building besides the, the roof for it to be placarded? Was there, is there structural problems with that building?
You know, I don't know that, prior to this owner, I know there was like, I drove down there once and a piece of glass was flying out out of the building in the, in the wind. It was like just coming down, and then it broke on the street. And, and so I think a little bit's been done, but the idea is that constantly, nobody's doing anything to fix that building. It just keeps getting worse and worse and worse. At this point, it can still be saved, and that's the idea. The owner was supposed to have so much time to make some improvements and, and, and got it. I think the city helped him get it, didn't they? Believing that he was going to develop it, and then he didn't do it. So we're just trying to get it in the hands of somebody that would develop it.
If I could answer, Eric said that the reason it was placarded was because of the roof.
Say it again?
The reason it was placarded was because of the roof. I, I think there might also be a window on the fourth floor facing City Hall that needs to be boarded up again. I don't think there's anybody getting into the building, you know, the walls aren't falling into the street. I remember when the, when the glass went flying on windy days, that was really frightening, it'd take somebody's head off. Thankfully, the previous owner boarded up a lot of those windows that had loose glass, so that's been taken care of.
Thank you. I guess, I, I guess I would just remind everybody of the four buildings that were on Main Street between Washington and Court that were, that was owned by Dennis Wilson and that had a similar problem. The, the, the roof buckled and the building fell in, and it, and they had to be demolished, there was no saving them. The, uh, uh, the, the old Sears Building just kind of fell in on its own, and, and so did the, uh, the building next to the railroad tracks on Main Street, and so did the back end of Digger's Rest. And, and to me, those appear to be in much better shape than what this building does. And I, I've been in this, I've been inside this building, and it's frightening, absolutely frightening. And I would, I would, I'm going to preference that by saying, I was the only one on the council that voted against assisting the people that were developing the Hotel Burlington. I was also the mayor that had the pleasure of tearing up the demolition order. But I'm still very afraid of this building, that we're going to stick the citizens of this community with the demolition cost, that we're going to have, we're just going to pile additional cost on by doing this transfer like we're doing. And, and, uh, it's, we're, we're throwing good money after bad on, on this one. I just. I just.
What are you saying then? We should go ahead and demolish it then?
I'm seeing why we've got an owner that has the pocketbook to pay for it, to force him to do it or to tear it down and then get the money back from him through legal means that we have every right to do when people don't take care of their properties. And not to take the property and then it's ours and then we're stuck with it. Even when we transfer it to Downtown Partners, they're not going to have the $200,000 to pay for the demolition. It's going to be the citizens. They don't have the, they don't have the funds to redevelop it. And all I've heard is there's a couple of people that are talking about being interested in doing a development. There's nobody that stepped forward with a checkbook and says, "I'm ready to go."
No, that's true.
You know, if the, if the building's salvageable and there's developers out there that want to move, then I want to see that before I commit to potential of spending $200,000 to tear down a building.
Well, and I guess I don't see it that way. I look at this as a way to avoid that. And knowing that it gets in the hands of DPI, it's in the hands of a group that would be eligible for some funding that could save that building.
So your point is, Tim, that basically that you don't want, once we, once we buy it, we can't go back on the, if they can't do anything with it, we can't go back on the owner of the building?
No, it's hard, it's hard responsibility.
So you're, I mean, that's, I mean, that's your biggest, that's your biggest driver though, right? Is that once we, once we do that, it's a wrap. We can't?
Yeah, it's hard responsibility.
I think since that owner doesn't live in this community, it's going to be really hard to get anything out of him, though. I'd rather get this out of his name.
How many other properties does he have?
I don't know because I think he was in a divorce and he lost some property, so I don't know. And he sold the Tama building. I don't know what he's got left. He doesn't own that house out there anymore. And I don't know whose name the building next door is in. I don't know if it's in his name or his X Y, so.
I've got a lot of confidence in Steve, but I definitely understand your point, Tim. I don't want to.
But Steve, Steve's done a lot for Downtown Burlington. He's, he's helped a lot and there's no, there's, I mean, no discredit towards him. But there are people that, that are going to take every step possible to save every building. And they would never admit that there's a, there's a cause, there's a building not worth fighting for. And, and I understand that. I've got some causes of my own that I feel the same way. But I, sometimes you're blinded by your passions.
I don't think that's the case of this building. I've been in this building too.
If we had a structural engineer study, Becky, that said that, I would support it 100 percent. But we don't have that. All we have is ifs and buts.
Where's, hold on, sir, Councilman, where are you at on it? Councilman Davidson, what do you, what do you think about it?
I'm a reluctant yes. But I don't want to be in the situation where Councilman Scott has just elaborated on and said so well. I do not want to own a building that should have been torn down. So, but, so it's going to be a reluctant yes for me.
And I feel like if we don't go ahead with this and we've placarded, then you're saying we have to drop the placarding and then go for legal? That's going to cost us something too.
So we can't do that, can we, Jim? Once it's placarded, can we take the placard away? Can we change our minds and say, "Well, wait a minute?"
Because if we've already started down that route.
Our legal process is to either try to get him to do it. If he's refusing to do it, which he's doing, our, our backstop is to do the demo ourselves.
And that puts us in a worse position.
Okay.
Okay. Let's, let's.
Ready?
Yes.
Anderson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Reluctantly, aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Scott?
Nope.
Okay.
Do you have a resolution authorizing purchase of real property and the leasing of same?
Second.
This would be the, within your packet, you have the resolution authorizing the purchase for 1.2 million of the Downtown US Bank location. The lease is attached in there. There is a statement in there in regards to the, I think it's $50,000 of earnest money required to be put down. Gives us the ability to go through an inspection process. Speaking with the chief, we looked at the idea that we'd hire an outside firm. I don't know if you've made contact yet or not, to do an evaluation of the facility. This gives a period for that review of the facility to occur. It transfers the leases that are on for specific office space within it over to us, specifically the county attorney's lease of space upstairs. It also envisions the leaseback of the property by US Bank from the date that everyone approves the purchase, both parties finalize purchase, until they get a new facility constructed. Now, they built in here two years. They wanted two years. We don't want it to be two years. But they're the sellers. They're looking for making sure that they have the ability to, to make sure that they don't get caught without a home for their, for their bank to be in. Their goal was to be done with that construction process in the period of a year, but they also know they don't have any guarantees at this point that they can get that done. So I think that's kind of where they're at in terms of why they've asked for a longer period of time. Lease amount in there is a $6.50 per square foot gross lease. That's on an annual basis. The contract, I think that's in your packet may, has some wording in there that would lend itself to be read as a monthly lease amount. We need to adjust it so it doesn't read that way. But that's a gross lease on a, on an annualized basis. That would be comparable. That's the same fee that the county attorney's office is paying for space upstairs. It may be a tad bit below market. That's been noted, both from one of the council members and actually a commercial Realtor would put, speaking with Jesse Caston, I think he felt it as $7 to $7.25 in that range. He felt was appropriate gross lease for, for what was in here just off the cuff. But that being said, we're not, I don't know how much of a profit we're after. I understand why they were pretty adamant about wanting it to be at that $6.50 because they have agreed to lease space to other people in the past at that rate. With the gross lease, they are responsible for the, their interior space, the cleaning, et cetera. We would be responsible for the cleaning of the common areas. We'd be responsible for utilities. We'd be responsible for property taxes, snow removal. The gross lease on that for $23,000 approximate square feet of space works out to about $150,000 annually. Cost on that, and then the county attorney's renting right now, what would be the equivalent, about $36,000 annually?
Yeah.
So $186,000 annual revenue comes in on that. Costs on it, $95,000 property taxes, utilities about $5,000 a year. Just a rough estimate on a conservative side, cleaning at $10,000, basic maintenance costs. Another, I mean, our property maintenance, if I were to look, was to look at, say, the police department building, I think yours is $20,000 for property maintenance charges, just as a ballpark. There's still, and then snow removal, to throw a figure in on that, even $5,000 for a year. A big snow year could see a $10,000 figure, I would assume. Low snow figure year could be lower, but you're going to cover your costs, I guess is what I want to say, and there's still some cushion in there at this lease rent, lease range. Our goal in having an amount there is to have something that's agreeable for them, but it's, it's not necessarily to be in a long-term for-profit. We just wanted to make sure that we were covering our costs in the transition period. That being said, can turn it over to you for any comments you may have in regards to terms that are associated with this.
Counsel?
Well, I'm one who thought the $6.50 was too low because I feel commercial property is rented at that price and the tenant pays the utilities. And here, we would get $6.50 and we are paying the utilities, the maintenance, and, I don't know, it just seems too low to me. And also the term being two years, I don't know what we can do about that, but it just doesn't seem like we're giving, you know, I feel like their cost is probably going to be about the same and there won't be much incentive to get them to move a little faster and get out of that building. I guess that's the part I don't like about it. It's just too long and too low priced. I'm fine with the purchase, but not the lease.
One of the things that we contemplated in one of the earlier drafts on this was after 15 months, seeing that rent, the square foot amount go up. We'd put in there $9.50. Speaking with Jesse Caston, he thought a more realistic figure, if you were to demand that, to try to create some incentive for them to try to get out faster, would be more in the $7.50 to $8.00 range, if you wanted to try to, to force their hand on that, but.
That doesn't, that's not very much of incentive. The $9.50 would be much more.
And if you want to go that high, you certainly can. But are you, are, where are you, what do you want to do in terms of, you're now, to some extent, you really want to be in the property. They want to be out of it too.
Yeah.
So, I mean, you can, you have room for some negotiations if you say you want to see it higher. And we can try to see what we can get worked out.
I guess I would like to see it negotiated a little bit more.
I don't want, I do hesitate to see this drag out for too long, no. We've already dragged it out a little bit here beyond getting through the vote period. And I, I don't want to interrupt this construction cycle this next year.
Well, I agree, but I, I think we still could negotiate a little bit more, especially if they hear that the council doesn't like it, you know, so.
How much, how much more, if we ask them for another dollar, how much difference does that make to us? What does that equal?
$23,000 annually.
Doesn't seem like worth haggling over.
But we are still paying, you know, all the utilities, which will be $20 some thousand, and the maintenance will probably be $20, and the snow removal, five, I mean.
Utilities is five. When I put that in there, that was a.
Utilities were, what?
He said, I talked, talking to the local banker, he said the utilities on that are about $5,000. I think that's low, but.
$5,000 for what?
I put 20 for utilities.
Oh, I.
And I, I think it's probably somewhere in the center.
$23,000 square feet? I think I would check with Alliant to know what the utilities are.
Which is, I built, when I built my budget and gave it to you, it was with the 20. Because I think that's what we asked Alliant for.
I would say $2,000 at least every month. It has to be. I know what we pay in our office, which is a tenth of that. We pay $200 to $300. And so that's 10 times bigger, so that would make me believe it's $2000 to $3000 a month.
The PD building is $25,000 annually for utilities. And when we worked with Alliant, they said to run the same operations in that facility, we'd probably be in the 22 range. They're not using as much as what we would in that facility.
But it's got to be.
But it's, I think it is higher than what he was thinking.
Yeah, I remember in the mid twenties, that was through the $38,000. That was for the rental, what we're talking about here. I mean, I understand we got utilities for the whole building, but we're specifically talking about $23,000 square feet. I mean, as far as the lease.
Is this worth, is this worth doing? I mean, is it worth the extra money, Councilman Scott?
Does anybody from the audience have anything?
Yeah, I was just trying to get a, get a handle on it.
It just looks like that adds up to the, to me, if I take $150,000 and take off the $95,000, we're not going to have any more for the property tax that they were paying. And that leaves 55, and then if we take off 20, you know, $25,000 for utilities, that leaves 30, and 20 for maintenance, that's 20, and then.
That's pretty tight.
I mean, that's like we're exactly even.
That's for the whole facility too, and there's another $36,000 of income that comes on top of that.
There is that. But they are even. They are even either way. So that doesn't give them much incentive to get going because they're not going to, it's not going to, if it doesn't cost them any extra to stay there.
Yeah, but I don't understand why you think they don't have an incentive to move. I mean, they made a major commitment as a bank.
I know, but you'd think they would move anywhere. They have funding.
How long does it take to construct? I mean, all I know is I don't want to see you shoot this down, good heavens. Please.
It's not worth haggling to me.
No, I don't want to shoot it down.
It is not worth haggling to me.
So everybody from the audience has any comments or concerns?
Rondelat, 812 Dunham. First of all, two real quick questions. The police officer doesn't need to come up here and give his name and address? He's wearing a gun? I'm just making a joke. The second one was, the numbers that you're bouncing around up here, these are the first times I've heard these numbers. They've never been in the Hawkeye. And I understand what you're saying, but are those numbers available in the city clerk's office?
You can go on the website and you can get all the information out of the packet that's available.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. My only concerns about the police station, absolutely totally, I agree that where they are currently located is absolutely dead wrong. It never should have happened, but it did. In Rockford, Illinois, they made, and there was four other communities I have been in that did the same thing. They made a very serious commitment. In Rockford, they completely tore down three square blocks in the heart of downtown. They built a brand-new police station, a brand-new courthouse, a brand-new jail, and a brand-new county, county police depart, police, county sheriff's office, and ample parking, just like Great River Medical Center. And the benefits to the police station and the community were phenomenal. I mean, they were in the heart of the city. They had plenty of ease of access to wherever they needed to go. They had, the traffic flow was adequate wherever they needed to go, with nothing being hampered. And being in the core of Downtown Burlington, I don't care what you talk about, the flood mitigation, it's still on a flood plain. Very, very simply, it happened in 2008 and it could happen very, very quickly next spring, what happened down in Carolinas and down in Texas. And if in fact the downtown area becomes that much more flooded from the rainfall, not the river, well, that's going to create a very serious problem for the safety of the community concerning the need for the police to not be able to even get to their station, number one. Number two, also the secondary thing that's to the safety and concern of this community is the fire department that's downtown, not that far from the USB Bank building. And if in fact that creates a flood problem. I know very seriously about what happened in 2008. My sister, brother-in-law, I have two businesses in the core of downtown. And it was months that the water in the basements of their buildings down there were flooded to the top. And they told, I wasn't here. They were. And they told me about all of what's going on, and it didn't have anything to do with the river. So all I need to say, ask you is, is there any speculation there of the serious consequences for, again, relocating even closer to the flood plain down there at the bottom, instead of finding some property someplace to, to construct a whole new facility with parking? We easily tossed away $16 million at the manor with wine guard, so it's like, I don't, I just don't understand the rationale.
I'd like to say the manor, that's.
I know, it's another ballpark. I'm just trying to make a comparison out of it.
And again, you know, you could look at, I think there was a community in the Quad Cities that just built a brand-new police station, but they spent $20 million. And again, you know, it's, you know, you can't, we can't have it all. You know, we can't have our cake and eat it too. This was a good, this was a good buy. We've gone through that building. Everybody had an opportunity to inspect it. And the US Bank building's been sitting down there. Even when we had the floods, we went down the basement and it was dry as a bone, not even as much as a drip. So I'm satisfied with that.
And the people who voted.
Yeah, we already made that decision.
We've been down this road so many times.
The only thing that I can say is, just what happened at the current location, you give it another 30, 35 years, what are the probabilities? That's the only thing I say.
Thank you.
May I comment, Mayor? I would like to see an escalator in 15 months of making it more of an incentive for them to, to get moving a little faster and maybe spend the money upfront to get, get done what they need to get done. And it's only right that we, you know, 15, 15 months is a reasonable amount of time. And I think that increasing it to 950 is not unreasonable.
We got, you still, are you still there with that?
Well, I, I am not in agreement with the way it's written. I mean, if I'm voting on whether to accept this lease, I'm not. I mean, if I'm voting on whether to accept this lease, I'm not going to say I'm in favor of that.
Bishop, you are, and Councilman Davidson.
I think we need to- we need to be moving, guys. We don't need to be delaying. And it's just going to go back into negotiations and they'll come back and say yes or no, and they offer this, then we take another whole month or more to go over the same- same carries again.
But I think that's why we're trying to speed it up, like, they have twenty-four months and we're trying to shorten it to fifteen months.
I would be surprised, totally shocked if it was twenty-four months, just totally shocked.
What's your bill?
What's your bill?
Anderson?
No.
Davidson?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
McCambe?
No.
Scott?
No.
Okay. Number one.
Okay, wait, before we go on, then, are you giving some direction to- to our city manager, what you want to nego- what you want to negotiate for?
I- I don't think we can. I think he needs to have heard what we said and- and come back to us with a package at the next work session that we can discuss. I- I, uh, we don't... We made our positions, each of us made our positions, I think, so...
All right.
He needs to take what he's got and work with it and get back to us as quickly as possible, even if it means a special meeting.
Number one.
A resolution approving final acceptance and final payment and release and retention monies for the CDBG facade project.
I second that.
Mayor, I just wanted to pull this off the agenda. I had a couple of phone calls. There's some concerns about some bills that's come in recently that is being put of things that aren't normally paid for or are itemized on a- on a bill, such as, uh, bonds and surety and, uh, a couple of other things I forgot to write down, but, um, I- I'm not- I'm not sure if everything's in on this yet. If everybody's been billed and if- if the city's gotten their money and, you know, if we even have the funds to pay this. I don't, um, I was real confused and so is some of the people that are involved in the- that were involved in the projects. Um, I think Becky's got more information on that, too.
And I guess I want to speak as one of the people involved in this and not as a city council person.
Can I get your name and address?
Becky Anderson, two eighteen South Sixth Street. Uh, last week at the city council meeting, this was brought up and the day after the, uh, I mean, at the work session, the day after the work session, all the people on this were delivered an envelope with an additional bill. And that bill said it was for insurance and bonding. It was not part of- it, you know, we- we all agreed to pay thirty percent and everything was itemized out. And now, after everybody's paid, now there's a new bill coming up. We would like the time to discuss that bill and- and negotiate it. If the city agrees to pay for this now, then they are paying that amount when we haven't agreed to it. And the city is really a pass-through in this. And so, I think the people who are paying the money need to agree that they're paying the right amount of money before the city pays the bill.
And where did the bill come from? For the insurance or bond or whatever it was?
Well, I- some that we need to know, that's the things we need to know.
It wasn't from...
I guess from the contractor.
Was it from the contractor?
That is my belief, yeah. And I think there's a meeting set up where we will all be discussing that.
Yeah, we'll meet the first week of January and have a discussion, and I think that'll include representatives from Klinger and...
Yes, and Chicken Dance and the property owners. But for some of the property owners, um, it was a pretty large amount. I mean, I know two property owners together totaled eleven thousand dollars.
Wow.
And that was not, you know, I mean, part of it. And- and we're paying- and the city's paying this before they get their money from all the property owners, too, and I'm a little nervous about that.
So, are you suggesting we table this until after that meeting in January?
I was going to suggest that we continue this meeting or table it until they have their meeting.
Thank you.
That's fine.
Thank you. I- I'm, yeah, I, uh...
I'm going to get used to it.
I, uh, I a hundred percent agree.
Your Honor, I have a motion to, uh, table the resolution approving final acceptance, final payment, and release and retention monies for the CDBG facade project.
I second.
I think you should, um, continue it to a specific date, like January eighteenth meeting.
Rather than table it, continue it. Okay, Your Honor, I move to continue the resolution of approving final acceptance and final payment and release and retention monies for the CBG facade, uh, project to January eighteenth.
Second. Kathleen.
Okay, Anderson, whoops, dang. Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambe?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Okay, excellent.
Thank you, Becky.
All right, at this time, uh, we will entertain comments from the audience. Yes, sir?
Hey, first thing I'd like to ask you is, is, uh, what you're calling for is go. And, uh, CDBG, it's not any of what it is. You got abbreviation and it doesn't explain exactly what it is. So, I'm sorry, sorry about that. I was going to get that phrase out of the way.
Community Development, uh...
What's that?
It stands for Community Development Block Grant.
Community Development Block Grant. It looked like it was scheme trying to hide it so everybody wouldn't see it, but one thing I was afraid of y'all, too, me to go home tonight and get you to the house, think about it. Al's boss pay two thousand and some dollars a year. So, it was not, I got it on top of the hill, it's real, it's out, it's... Over two thousand dollars. I think I got some money on the deck, you know? Y'all using my tax dollars, everybody else's tax dollars. And you should treat the people right. I'm going to treat them right, okay? Can you tell me if each one of you have a plan to present to the city, the public and the city of Burlington? You know, about curbing the crime and things, is that next to here in the city? You know, if you go out and you look, Al sixty-one, toward Fort Madison, you have more of them, big eighteen wheels, bumper to bumper. You better be careful how you go, get- get up on the road. The police department, they got a whole lot of money out there on sixty-one. There's enough money out there to pay all our taxes. You still in the right place, I think. Sixty-one is just nothing but a place for something to happen, a tanker or something, somebody running through it, blow it up. It's bad.
I agree with you there.
See people coming in here in seven cars, six and seven cars, forty-one of them, coming to Burlington. The word is out there, you want to die, go- go to Burlington, go Fort Madison, Weaver. And it's- it's pretty shocking. You need to get to know, treat your- treat- treat your public with kindness, with devotion. You might need that person one of these days. When was the last time you- you as a council came together in a- in a special, you know, seminar or something like that and, you know, talked about these things? You know, William Parton, you might be up at your head, but be careful, somebody might put you at the head for purpose. Listen, because I say every year, same amount of taxes. I am so tore up about the young people in here because I tracked them down, I got them step in addition to, uh, here not too long ago, years ago, stole on the school board, and here's just one issue. This city council, you start- start talking with the school board, see what's going on, their problem here, they might be trying to help them out. They need to talk to you guys, but y'all need to get your head together, you know, appreciate one another because you are- you represent the people, not just a certain group of people. You represent the people. And the people- the people supported you guys, voting for you, giving you what you had, are today, okay? Now, Maple Hill, and I think I got, I've been here long enough and just about know- know Burlington like the back of my hand, but Maple Hill, yes, that area is rough sometimes. And then I, a whole- a whole lot of times, we try to push it off on somebody else, but it's our own people, some of their children, which, uh, didn't graduate. They can't get a job because you'd like somebody to put a framework against them. If they had- they had got a record or something like that, and the next person behind them doesn't have a record, the person without a record gets a job, it's actually different. No difference, it doesn't make any difference the pay to do in jail or what. That follows them. But I'm just saying this much, with the help of the city council, we can educate our children, little children, out of that stone wall position that they're in. Those young people and their kids, uh, they're going to be citizens of Burlington down the road, who you want?
Uh, uh, you know, I'm going to- I want to interject real quick and I- I agree with you, but I want to say, as far as educating the kids, that's not the job of the city council, that's the job of our churches and, uh...
This is not my job, this is not my job. When I heard that down there, Kate, you either go to work or throw your butt over the stick. But we look at things and, and it's not our job.
That's not the job- that's not the job of the city council to, uh, to raise kids.
The city and the board should be in cooperation together, they should communicate and they should talk to one another, read your papers. I am not the only one saying it, Hawkeye says it, too.
I'm- I'm just telling you what the- when I signed on for council, I'm just telling you what the- what the job description says, and that's not our job. And actually, the- the point that you're trying to bring up is- is more- would be more directed toward the- the school board.
Well, it's, I'm telling you, if you get together, like- like what that, oh, Maple Hill, Salt School, where you went to, that area, there was a woman living right up here on- on the, across the bridge, down Sixth Street, on the right-hand side, she had three kids. And I went back and done a check and neither one of those kids graduated from school. Now, go back and check now and you'll find out they got a record along the yard. This young lady said it in- said it in jailhouse right now. But you can educate these people out. Why are you afraid to associate yourself with- with young people? Now, there are other schools that...
What do you mean, afraid to associate with young people?
Go in there and work with these kids and find a new way, like- like this place up there, where they want to put the ten- ten partners there. Ten partners for what? Because somebody won't- you throw someone up there and make it look that way, go ahead and rest people that used to live there, you know, uh, they call it the ghetto high V, the ghetto this and the ghetto that, because they know one thing, Brooklyn's not going to do anything about it to improve the situation. I'm saying that the city council, and take it to the bank, they might wish you had done this down the road. The city council, the city council, and- and they already in Burlington, need to get association, a line of commitment between them and- and the young- young people in this city. That needs to happen, but it don't happen one way, it can happen the governor branch that jumped up, called, I mean, we, uh, got the protections out here, the new- you want that new protection out here, so what, the biggest lies it was? Oh, we're- we're going to tear down that old one. And build a new one. They tore it down, all right, they're still sitting down there, waiting to be renovated so they can put the most people in there. My question is, guess who? We can educate these children, we don't do nothing for them. Years ago, they- they had a strip down in downtown on Saturday, Saturday, Saturday night, where they used to, they used to drive up and down the street there. And if you do that, just they just jumped up, got mad at them, kicked them out. Where did they go? Hard. They got mad at them, kicked them out. So, then finally got down to the swimming pool, uh, and I ain't calling the lady's name. She got- got a little hot line, she stirred it up a little bit, she had a little fresh tea here in the city and went, I think too many people going to fuck them. But she jumped the city, the city about keeping that pool open, and it's open right now, today.
I fought for that swimming pool. I fought for the swimming pool to stay open. That wasn't any pressure from anybody on me, I was- I was for the swimming pool to begin with, but...
But I'm going to tell you, we can- we can do things, we shouldn't harden our hearts against young people.
I agree.
But that's what we're doing. That school can be turning, when I was in school, on school board, I was walking down the hallway and as I walked down the hallway, I happened to look in the door and there was a young- young boy, young kid standing at the back of the room with his hands crossed folded and his head down, and I asked the teacher, I said, could I go out back there and talk to him? She said, yes, he's been like that all day. So, I go back there, she keep it in mind, he's been like that all day. I go back there, waking up, waking up, young man, he woke up, I said, what's the problem? I'm tired. I said, we're tired of what? I'm so hungry. Now, this, what could happen there? And help that kid out is the situation, Maple Street School has everything in it that we need to make it a place called Maple Hill Community Center.
We've- we've got the Maple, uh, we've got the...
What is it?
Maple Leaf.
We've got the Maple Leaf right now.
Yeah, but we talking about doing something physically for kids. That young boy was tired, he was hungry. If we had the facilities there and where they, yeah, you know, where they put the kitchen, they could cook some sandwiches and stuff there, they can bus them over there, they can use three sandwiches and go home. They would, number one, go home all full of stomachs, they would go home more- more excited than they were before.
Nobody's- nobody's came to us on that, though. Nobody's came to...
Well, I'm standing around here now.
And we do have after-school programs now for a lot of these...
Well, yeah, but I mean, it, I mean, we just can't- we just can't give stuff away, I mean...
Well, look at it here, if you take some of that, my taxes, and put over there, I'm not going to complain about it, I mean, a whole lot of people in town would complain about it. Somebody else would cop- cop- copy it off you and try to make- and do a better job than you've done on it. You see what I mean? That's what- that's the way life is. You know what I mean? Thirty years ago, a case. I walk out on the floor and the guy just looked at me. But they didn't notice something, there was something underneath all that. And once I told him, I said, you know what, gentlemen, we're going to make a direct labor force out of this. They got to thank you. But there's certain things that we need to do, because these companies ain't going to hire, it's going to run out pretty soon. And when a person ain't got no money, he's like going to call you honey. He's going to hurt you one way and he's thankful to forgive you. But if we got the facilities in, we can go out with people and take these kids and, uh, maybe the girl, his mother didn't know home economics, she didn't know how to cook. They could teach that up there, they could teach a whole lot of things, they could have a tutoring service up there. You can make that a place that's doing something rather than sitting there and waiting for tornado to hit and blow it over. I've already made one- one step with- with the State Department and one with the federal- federal department. I don't have to try to get this grant money, I might help myself. And in some way, we could, you know, you think God can come up with assistance in West Park, we will try to help you. I'm not- I'm not asking for anything, I'm just asking for your help, not your money. I want you to return some of my money and they could invest it in some young person's life. I- what- what are you talking about, my tax dollars? One way or another, the law is will. I'm not- I start being like some of the other people in this city. If we're scared to talk to the associate, we don't know what they're going to do, it might mess the job up, it might even put a hit on it. But what I'm saying, I've got three lawyers, my nephew and his wife, and my- and my cousin, help on the city. I'm going to do what I got to do. No, let me tell you, you don't want this young people, keep your hands off of it. But don't come messing with me. Because I'm going to try to make a- make a way for these young people up there on Maple Hill, I don't know how I'm going to do it, God knows it, don't. Yes, but I'm working on the grant to get it. Now, it's got faces, it's got a little face and the people I'm working with and who they are. Now, it's got faces, it's got, got a little face in the people I'm working with and who they are. But, if, I can't believe we have an attitude that we have. And we can look the public in the eye, the very people, tax dollars, that's supporting everything you do. And you talk down your nose, and you look down your eyes at, that's no way to be. They should love the gun to talk to you, that's no way to be. Okay?
God bless you in that endeavor. God bless you in that endeavor, huh?
All right, thanks.
Thank you. I get unplugged.
I want to, just say tonight, I can understand some of the things that the speaker just spoke of a few minutes ago. And, uh, sometimes if you live in these situations, you may understand a little bit better, maybe some of the concern that the gentleman just spoke about a few minutes ago. Some of the things that we wanted to do with the young people, it didn't work out. And I'm addressing, what I'm saying now, is some of the people that was on the board here. When we presented a situation here, and, uh, that was an excellent opportunity, we tried to work with young people. Our future, and that was excellent opportunity. People motivated, wanted to do...
Which one, which, what are you talking about? I, I don't...
Well, this is a year or so ago. And we were the only group, so, you know, it hasn't been that many groups down here seeking, uh, housing.
The apple trees?
Uh, it has not been that many people down here, that's what I'm saying, seeking housing, seeking, uh, something to help the young people. All the people, not just a particular group, that's, that's what I see. I can make my judgment call, 'cause whoever make their judgment call. And when you don't understand some things, and you, you present to, to those in authority, and, uh, you, well, as far as maybe turn down, and not get clarity, it, it's pretty frustrating. And you say, well, I don't understand, I, well, maybe you, maybe you don't desire to understand. Maybe you have purpose in your heart that, uh, you're not gonna be a part of this. We all taxpayers. You know? And, uh, you, you can make, you can call your judgment, next you call their judgment, I call my judgment. But a lot of time when things are not clear to you, you, you may see things that's not really the way it really is. I mean, I believe in just coming straightforward, I mean, that's the way I live, that's the way I strive to be. But I have not found that with some of the council members, I won't say that.
Come, just come straightforward with it, though.
I'd rather just leave it at that. And I can understand the feelings of the gentleman just spoke here. I don't give it a name call. But, uh, like I say, we're all taxpayers. And, uh, I, I, I see, I, I hear different things are going on here, I just listen. And, uh, it, it, it does not, uh, uh, seem fair to one group of people compared to another group of people. So, I'm gonna, uh, I asked for something from, uh, here, I never received it. So it makes me feel like you never were in, interested in everybody in the city.
And I know what you're talking about, because you wanted something in writing about that, and I did bring that up to other people here.
But I was not, I never received that, you know...
I know you didn't receive, and I don't know, maybe Kathleen can find the minutes to that meeting, um, and print that out and show...
That was, you know, uh, when things happen, uh, I'm dealing with myself. I have a certain length of time, else the city gonna assess me with the fine or something. If I don't clean my yard, if I don't take care of this apartment over here. I, I, I presented that as a taxpayer, and you, what, what happened? This is a couple of months ago.
Well, but, but this happened almost three years ago.
A respectful way, that, just giving respect, uh, what have I done? Giving respect, I...
If this is the apple trees, I thought we were more than respectful, we, we have extended the time.
I'm trying to say something, I'm trying to say something. And you mean, I never received anything in my, I presented a piece of paper, and, and Ms. Becky, you took that? And, and no one responded back to me?
And I did bring that up, but the apple trees, the decision on that, excuse me, sir, I'm speaking. The apple trees decision was more than two years ago, because I don't think, uh, Tim Scott was on here, so it was three years ago. So that, you, I think, waited plenty of time to ask that of me, and then if I didn't get it back to you, and I did ask that here, and they felt it had been too long, and I told you that when you called me.
I didn't, I didn't, I didn't exactly ask that, you, I presented it. You received it, I, 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 I presented it to the, to the council.
And I told, and I did tell them about it.
But, uh, what I mean...
Right at the meeting, I said, I just gotten this, and, and, and I, and they said it had been too long.
You know what, no one contacted me. Not a one contacted me. That makes me feel like, my tax, I'm, I'm unimportant. Nobody contacted me.
About that.
But yet, we sit here for a whole year, and reason, and everything sounded good, until everything went stop, I said. And I can understand what the gentleman was speaking about a few minutes ago.
See, I...
Nobody, nobody seemed to be interested in starting.
We, but we get, when you came for, if it's, if this is the apple trees, which obviously it is, which I, I would just much rather, you said that you, you'd like to be direct and to the point, let's do that. If this is the apple trees, when you guys came with your, with, uh, with your idea to get the apple trees building, we said, okay, well, you need to apply for some grants or whatever. And, and most cases, let me, let me finish, in most cases, we would shut somebody down, we'd say, well, hey, you got thirty days or whatever, or we're just gonna leave it open. For, for you guys, for your group, we gave you, I think, nine months, we, or, not nine months, uh, we gave you ninety days, I know at a minimum. We said, we'll give you ninety days to cut, to get, uh, to file for grants or whatever, and come back to us. When you came back after the time was up, you hadn't filed for any grants. I mean, we, we treated you the same way that we would treat anybody else, except for a little bit better, because we gave you more time. So, I mean, I don't understand what, what, what else we're supposed to do beyond that.
You can say what you can say, but the record speaks for itself. And there were only, there were only four here, what we presented, since you, since you brought it up, I didn't bring the name up, you brought it up.
Right, right.
I was speaking of, I was speaking of, I was speaking of a piece of paper that I left.
But it was about the apple trees.
Well, I'm just saying, I didn't bring the name up.
No, but I'd rather just, let's just go ahead and talk about...
I didn't bring the name up, you brought it up.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, I'm just saying, I didn't bring the name up, I just asked for a statement, that was all. Because reason I was asking for a statement is, I see, I see, uh, others are seeking for something, see, I said, well, where did, where did on this situation that, that I go wrong, what did we go wrong? I need to correct that, because if I apply for something else, I mean, history will be repeating itself, and hey, man, I need to know where I went wrong, what did I do wrong? Maybe I can correct that and be better, if I present something to the city, uh, next time, well, I will know this, and I'll know that, but I understand what you're saying.
But I tried to explain that to you.
If you go back in the record, you'll find out. I mean, we can say a whole lot of this, and I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna dispute you or anything, just go back to the record, since you brought it up.
I'll have Kath, I'll have Kathleen pull it up and get copies.
Okay, since you brought, that'd be fine. But I was just asking for a statement, that was all, and ask for anything else. I didn't bring up about this here, other deal, whatever you call the name of it, I didn't bring it, I'm not gonna bring it up out of my mouth, since you brought it up.
But that's, but that's what we're talking, I mean, that's what we're talking about, right?
I didn't, I didn't, all I was saying for a statement, I just asked for a statement, that was all, I didn't bring up no name of this or that. I didn't bring it up, you brought it up, I didn't, I just asked for a statement for it.
About the apple, yes, but you asked for, you asked for a statement about the apple trees.
Well, I asked, I had, but I didn't bring it up tonight, though.
No, but...
I brought this up a few months ago, that was all.
And I, and I did explain to you why you didn't get that, did I spend the time on the phone and tell you why I thought you didn't get that grant?
But what I'm saying is, all right, I, I understand what you're saying, but I'm saying, that showed that I'm not, I, you don't have no, uh, you're not important, you, you're a tax dollar, not important, you can leave town, go back somewhere else, this or that.
But see, that's why...
I don't think that's...
That's all I'm saying.
That's why I would disagree, because I, I think, I thought we were showing that you were important when we extended the time when you came down with interest. And we said, hey, we'll give you extra time to come back with a plan. I thought, I thought we were, I thought we were...
All I'm saying is, I'm gonna say it again, just let the record speak, just let the record speak. You understand, just let the record speak. And we sit here, we sit here, we paid our money, I'm not calling the name, this or that. And you know the things that you said to us, made me seem like I'm a second-class citizen, you sitting here on this board. Like, if you wanna go into detail, we can do that too.
Who, are you, me?
I'm not gonna call no name, let the individual...
Well, well, if it was me, then tell me, if I, if I said it something, then tell me.
Let the individual speak, let the individual speak by themselves, I'm not calling no name, let them speak.
I'm just saying, if I said something, I'd rather you just say that it was me, I'd rather you call me out.
Mayor Roger, that eight twelve down, I'm very, very aware what these two gentlemen are trying to say, and I realize...
Nobody listening.
I, I, I listened, sir, believe me, I listened, I heard you. Uh, I, I know what's going on over here, without any doubt in my mind. Number one, if you stop and look at their ages, without any doubt in my mind, back in the day when they were in their twenties and their thirties, all of this never happened, it was never going on. And then as the time moved on, he and this other gentleman over here are, are creating their lives, their homes, their families, and, and all the activities going on in the community was just totally outside of the parameters, until now. So what they don't have is they don't have the awareness of the changes that has happened. In the day, and I know this, because my parents were this way when I was younger, in the day, you could easily approach anybody in the city, and you could get hands-on assistance, not just a phone call, and there's nothing wrong with that, don't get me wrong. You, and this idea about the grants, to apply for the grants, well, I don't really believe they understand exactly what that's supposed to mean. Therefore, they could only react to and respond to what they already understood with the past history, and that's where they're coming from. And I don't blame them, I don't blame them, but what I do say is, it ain't your fault either, it's not your problem either. So what they are asking for, both of them are asking for, they're asking for some sort of intermediary, somebody there that connects them with, if they don't understand the school board, if they don't understand the city council, that there's an intermediary to help them define and understand, so they don't have to go through this. The other part of it is, I already know, because I've been through it, the boiling, so to speak, demeanor that you're getting, so a little bit of steam coming off, isn't just because of him with the children, it isn't just because of him and the apple trees, there's other things that have become very frustrating, that neither one of them get a hold of, they just don't comprehend. Am I right?
Yep.
Am I right, sir?
I'm gonna have a thing to say.
Okay, okay, am I right?
Yep, and then, and the police department, they got...
Let's, uh, you know, you know, let's, uh...
That's all I'm trying to say now.
Come on, okay.
As far as I'm concerned, when I came here, I'm very much more aware that really, the city council didn't really, really know exactly why I came here, other than what I was just speaking about at the time, back that Monday, Monday evening, but there was another reason I was here. Based on the things that my neighbors and friends had told me about the city council, as well as the Hawkeye, uh, I don't ever in my life have I ever, ever just taken what people say, and I respond to what they say only, no, I don't do that. I take it my entire life, my entire career, when I was twelve years old, and my dad told me that I was gonna have to pay him rent for the lawnmower, because I was using it to mow the labor's lawns, I went and bought my own lawnmower, my own gas, my own gas, and I didn't even talk to him about it, I just did it. So when he came back and asked me, he said, what about the money for the lawnmower? I said, I'm not paying you, I already bought my own lawnmower, and he just grinned, and he gave me a thumbs up. I didn't realize for many, many years down the road, until I was already at junior college, establishing my career, that back when I was twelve, I found out I had a backbone. I didn't realize that. So what I did here with the city council that last Monday that I was here was the same thing I have done with people in my entire career, my entire life, and I have been successful. This is what I have been told, this is what I think I'm seeing, but I don't understand it, so I came here and I put you to a test.
Thank you.
And I put the Hawkeye to a test. And multitude, there was three of you, I believe Mr. Fremy, I believe Mr. Scott, and Mr. Furnell, you failed the test. It doesn't mean that you failed as being on city council, you failed my test, as well as the Hawkeye. The Hawkeye conveniently, at their own demeanor, decided to omit part of what I actually said, and the only printed part of what I said. Do we all know in the law, do we all know in education process, that any time you choose to omit anything regarding the truth, it's a lie, a flagrant lie? All right. You're the one that went off when I said that the entire city, the entire city of Burlington...
Excuse me, just a minute, Mr. Scott, the reason I go off is because you point your finger and you say you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's disrespectful, you stand up there and you be disrespectful to us up here at the council, and I, and all I can do in return is to show disrespect.
Now, let me explain to you something.
When, when, when the other two gentlemen were speaking, I kept my mouth shut and I listened to them, but they weren't pointing their finger at me, and they weren't saying you, they were being gentlemen about it, so...
Let me explain to you the approach that you took, okay?
We've got about four minutes, and I'm bringing this thing to a wrap.
Thank you. I brought up the subject about the population of Burlington, and how many were really concerned being the downtown Burlington. And you're the one going off in regards to having a business with a hundred people in it every day, there's five thousand people down in the city of Burlington, and you said, there's five thousand people down there every day, and I said, that's not facts, and you said, those are facts. And then you, again, I repeated it, and you went, the facts, right there on the table. So, no, you weren't pointing your finger at me, but it was the same demeanor. What is the population of the city of Burlington, I already knew that when I came here, what is the population?
About twenty-eight thousand, about twenty-eight thousand.
And what's the population of West Burlington?
Uh, about thirty-five hundred.
That's pretty good. And West Burlington is making a very serious economical contribution to the economy of the city, right? They have jobs, some of them have jobs here, they're shopping here, their restaurants, food chains are all coming into Burlington. So they have an involvement with the city.
Sure.
Okay, that's over thirty thousand people. You're the one that validated my numbers, I don't mean to point, I'm sorry, you're the one that validated my number. You don't, you don't even know that.
We gotta wrap it up.
So what's your point?
Okay. I said fifteen percent, you argued with me and said five thousand people. Do you know what five thousand percentage wise for thirty thousand people? Sixteen point six eight percent. You validated me.
So what's your point? Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna wrap it up today.
Last comment, and I'm done. My point is, you ran off with the mouth in regards to your own particular thinking without even identifying the truth. You validated me, sir, you authenticated me.
Sir? If you're looking for an argument, you're gonna get one.
Oh, yeah, no problem.
But well, let's, let's wait till after the meeting. That's it, that's it, that's it, that's it, that's it, that's it. Hold on, now, we can't have comments from the audience now.
I'm sure they're closing, they're closing on my money.
I want, I want to close on this.
You know, this is, hold on, hold on, hold on, this is still a council meeting, this is a council meeting. This is, this is the council chambers. Yes, sir.
There's a lot of, it, it's more to this than probably to add, I, it's a lot of frustrated, quite a few frustrated people behind what has taken place. One of the things that I thought, and I still say...
Chief?
When we were striving... When we were striving to do something, and I thought, I thought, sure, that we could, before we, before we awarded, whatever we awarded, I thought we could, you know, come together and say, hey, you all worked it out. Because you're taxpayers, I'm taxpayer, all of us are taxpayers. But to be left out in the cold, boy, this is pretty rough, this is pretty tough. I mean, we, we, we're talking about shared buildings, couldn't we have shared a building? Couldn't we have gotten something out of it? And you know, you, you know, I, 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 I'm gonna tell you, I can't see how some of you could go to sleep at night... And you know, you, you know, I, 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 I'm gonna tell you, I can't see how some of you could go to sleep at night after making such a erroneous decision like that. I mean, couldn't, couldn't have been something that we got out of it? I mean, buildings can be shared, I mean, people are coming together to share. But just say, uh, you know, and I hope, I, I, I'm asking, who pulled the record out? And that's what, Ms. Becky, is that what you said to the city?
Well, that was a suggestion made.
A suggestion, you know, if the council can, mayor if you can, city if you can. I mean, I think some of this should be cleared up, some of the, some of the things that were said, yeah, I mean, maybe can be cleared up. And if I could just get something in writing, since I presented it to the council, that was all I was asking.
I will have, uh, I will have the cat, the cat, or the city clerk, uh, pull up the minutes from that meeting and uh, I'll have her make copies for you and that way, that way you'll be able to, you'll be able to check through that and see for yourself.
Alright, alright, I, I appreciate it, I appreciate it.
Kathleen, make sure, uh, make sure that, uh, I get that handled this week, please.
Reverend, can I, can I say something?
Yes.
I've got the deepest respect for you and, and what, what you try to do and what you try to achieve. And I know you've been an advocate in this community for as long as I can remember and I, I appreciate everything that you do for the community. I know we're gonna disagree from time to time. I, I, I know we're gonna say things that are gonna upset each other from time to time, but I want you to know, I truly respect you. And I also respect the other speaker.
Yes.
Because he's been an advocate as well, he stepped forward, he's been in, in elected office and, and, and I will, I, I will defend you in, in, in every way that I can and I'll argue with you from time to time too, so. And, and I think that's the way we all feel up here and we, I, I don't want uh you to think or Reverend Sparks to think that I or any of us are, are against you. We're not, we're not fighting against you, there's, there's times that we don't agree, but I know there's been times, a lot of times that we have agreed and, and we've worked together on things. And we, and I think we still can too.
Well, I just, I wanna, I wanna say this, thank you, uh, I believe at the time you weren't on the board. So, maybe to go back to the records, you could, you could understand the feelings.
Sure.
They, they're pretty, they're pretty deep, they're pretty.
Yes, sir.
Will y'all do me a favor, call uh.
Can I have you come to the?
Call uh, I'm gonna walk all over here. Y'all put somebody up. Alright. Now, Scott, quick, yeah. Uh, we have, we had a meeting with superintendent of the school district, uh, Corrine. He's a good, he's a good person to talk to, I mean, I mean, he's the type of person, he's a military guy. But he's a, he's a, he's a bear, he's a bear guy, he's, he's, but I think you need to talk to Corrine and maybe ask him, what could a person, uh, possibly do that he thinks here in the city of Burlington to improve those locations and communities that are out of whack? And first thing, just without a police department, they gotta record everything down there and try to bring it back into order, it needs to be brought back into order. Once they see that you have the power to bring things back into order, you might see crime, they, 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 they give and die. Right now, they just, I think they got, you, you people not coming on, on the police force. But uh, these years, talk, talk to Corrine and talk to, you know, I'm sure, I mean, they. Look at you standing what we doing right now, we're out of, we think, we got, we ain't no bad any kids out there. Oh, yeah, I got it down here. No, those kids, you got your mayor right there, a good person in the community that knows, knows the community well. I'm quite sure he's got, he really knows, knows, knows the community, he's a decent person well. And he needs to throw it out, if it's not about us, we get it, it's not about us, it's about those that are behind, coming out. And you young people, I tell you, when you, when you do something for them, just to get excited. But we gotta resurrect that excitement from them and bring it up. But we can do a better job and that would take a whole lot of burden and cost to build up, out, out the police force and stuff like that, just keep looking. And about that young man, when they see me coming down that pit and he go pulling that shape, I say, listen, you got one more move, you gonna over the fence, one way or another, little story about I do. And get tired, I get to a point, I get tired of playing with people, trying to laughing at you, trying to make a fool out of you and stuff, this, next, you do too. You been down that road, thank you, please try, just go ahead, get out of here.
Uh, point guard, closing remarks?
No.
Councilman Davidson, closing remarks?
Other than biting my tongue? Merry Christmas.
Councilman Scott.
Um, yeah, I wanna, I wanna say Merry Christmas as well and God bless America and.
Amen.
Thank you, Becky, for, for four years, you, you, you're amazing. You, you have done a tremendous job on getting the downtown into uh, to a point to where it looks like it's gonna be whole. And I, I don't think if it wasn't for your, your efforts and your tenacity and your, your constantly beating up on the rest of us that it would've got done. And it, it's a, I, I'm just so amazed at how much you've been able to accomplish, not just the four years, but the, the, your, your time and the steps that you've taken and your ability to, to work the system. And that's the federal and state system, it's just, it's been tremendous. And your vision is, has been great. I know we haven't always, haven't always agreed, but um, that's okay. It just makes the world a better place and I appreciate it and, and much, much more success with the, with your life and the downtown and, and uh, you know how to get a hold of us.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanna say, uh, I envisioned this as, you know, your last meeting going so much better. You know, I just thought it was gonna be balloons coming from the.
Yeah.
But anyways, I just wanna say that uh, it has been a pleasure working with you. Uh, I think you're just an amazing human being, uh, I am honored to call you my friend and uh, uh, thank you for just all the, all the insight, all the information, just your tenacity, just everything you've done. Uh, I want you to know, I don't care what anybody says, uh, you gave us four strong years and Burlington, uh, Burlington, all of Burlington owes you a hug and a pat on the back. And since they can't do it, can I get one before you have closing remarks? Thank you. Closing remarks, Mayor Pro-Tip taken away.
Alright. Well, uh, yeah, I wanted to say, I wanted to be the last one to speak tonight because um, you learn in four years, it's a lot different sitting here than it's sitting out there and, and it's a totally different perspective. I wanna thank the council people that I've been with all this time and um, and they're, and they're right. We don't agree, but we have to work through it, we represent different points of view and, and I feel like, I, I've been happy with everybody I've worked with and I've appreciated everybody's point of view. Whether we agreed or not, we all needed to say what we needed to say at different times and, and we worked it out. You know, another thing that, that I looked at different was the city employees because um, you know, you just don't think about it. And then you get out there and you realize the people that are picking up your garbage, the people that are doing things. We have, we have such great city employees and they're always helpful and courteous. I'm just, I was always proud of any, any of them that I saw out there. And anytime I had to run into them, no matter what, whether it was the, the fire department or the policeman, um, everybody made me proud. The department heads, so I wanna thank them, um, Eric, I'm, I'm sorry he's not here. Eric, Eric is just, he amazes me on all the things that he gets done and, and um, he's so level-headed and he's, he's been really great to work for and, and Charlie has been great and everybody in that department. If I had to go out and pick who I wanted to be all the department heads, I don't think I could've picked any better than the people who are the department heads now. It just seems like everybody that is the head of a department is the right person there. And, and I just feel so good about that because in the beginning, it was so difficult. There were so many changes being made and, you know, we didn't have money and, and things, you know, when Shane and I came on. And, and I'm just so happy with, with where things are now. I'm, I'm so pleased with um, with all the department heads. I'm, I'm so happy about the police department that we're finally gonna get something done. And I think, Steve, I think you do a great job and, and the things you fight for and everything, I think it's great. And um, and Dawn, I've appreciated your speaking a lot too, it's been very, very good. And of course, one of the big, the big thing that happened when Shane and I came on board was uh, that we didn't have a city manager and uh, I, I can't, I can't imagine we could've got a better city manager. And um, you know, you hear a lot about Jim handling the finances and everything, but what I see is a great leader. Because I know at the time we came on, morale was low and um, and Jim is a great leader. And I think that, I think that's why when I go out in the community too, I see everybody being so courteous and nice. I think it's his example and, and I'm so thankful for you, Jim. Uh, and last but not least, of course, I want to um, thank all the citizens who voted for me and thank anybody else that put up with me, so.
That's my line.
So, it's uh, so it wasn't pleasant in the beginning, but I'm glad I did it. And, and I feel like, when we came on, I feel like Burlington was at its lowest point in that, that we helped to bring it up. And so, that's it, thank you, everybody, for the four years, it's been wonderful, thank you. And this was probably our longest meeting that we ever had.
Well, would you like to, would you like to call this meeting adjourned?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion.
We can adjourn because Councilman Fleming.
And I would like to make a motion that we adjourn now.
Second. Kathleen.
Anderson.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
McCambe.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Thank you so much.